Bruce Lickman's meeting on February 86 at 6:00 PM. We welcome everyone. If this meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel WCAT, Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. If you would like to talk, once you're appointed, you can come up front, say your name, and if you're a resident or a board of representatives. And to get us fully started, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we're gonna start with a monthly report on the Quaybog-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir?
Just before we start, if we could have possibly a moment of silence for our Chair of our Board of Assessors and member of our Board of Health who recently passed, Don Makowski.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, thank you for that. So we have a monthly report on the Quaybog Regional School District by Superintendent Steve Dogg. Welcome tonight.
Good evening. It's nice to see you again. So I'll provide you an update of things that are going on at Quaybog, where we're at and where we're headed. We did get, and we did talk about this last time, but we did get the IVAC grant. It has been signed, sealed, and delivered. We're waiting for the incentives for, from National Grid. There was a holdup that they were looking at the federal level according to the contractor that we have, so we're looking for that information, but that'll be about $434,000 worth of upgrades. That'll cost the town nothing at this point, which is great at Quaybog's. So that's to do the whole heating system like we did at Warren Elementary School with the Green Community Grant that the town and certainly Town Administrator Ferrera was a huge part of for us to be able to do that to help offset the cost of some of the heating bills, which ultimately affect our assessments in our towns. So I am happy to announce that all the information is in and has been approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so we are good to go. Mr. Estrella will be meeting with the gentleman next, over February vacation, to finalize those plans. We do have a community service club. If you remember, in the fall, we did some community cleanup for some of the residents within our community. Some of the elderly people or handicapped folks that had difficulty with cleanup. We have partnered with the Parks and Rec Department from the town of Warren. We'll be helping out with their Valentine's Day dance on the 14th. So we have students from the high school coming down and helping Sue Ramsey and Lisa Boucher and the rest of the department out over there with that particular dance. Community Reading Day will be coming up. Before you know it, we will be extending invitations to the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager, to the Police and Fire Chief, and Highway Department as well. If you can participate in that, that's always a great way to come out and see what's going on in our schools. We did go out for transportation bid. We did hire Rich Labrie. The cost of that was $9,900. However, it's reimbursable through the state. That's why we hired somebody who had gone out and done, and has done transportation bids across the state, which is very knowledgeable in those areas. We went out to bid. We ended up with two bidders. So Lizak and McCarthy were the two lowest bidders that we had. We'll continue with the contract with transportation. That'll be reflected when we do our budget presentation to the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. It was an 8% increase over last year, which is roughly $300,000, but I'll put more numbers to that when we do our budget presentation. Lots of districts were seeing double-digit transportation increases, so we're pretty fortunate that it was only 8%, particularly going out. So it was a five-year contract, and we reached out to 64 different vendors, and we had two bids. So just so that the Board is aware of that. Rich Labrie is happy to come and talk to you about transportation. I'll talk to Town Administrator Ferrera about that. If the Board of Selectmen or Finance Committee are interested in how that process works. He did meet with the Westbrook Field Advisory Board, so I'm happy to bring him here as well if you guys would like. Currently, we're working through our budget. We've had several budget subcommittee meetings so far. So our next meeting will be Monday night at 6 o'clock for our budget subcommittee. We'll continue the preliminary numbers that come out. They shifted from day one to day two, and those will continue to shift as it passes through the House and the State, the Senate, but I will be doing a presentation for you within the next month or so, probably a little bit earlier. Okay? So I'll come back to you with that. MSBA, we do qualify for MSBA projects. We qualify for a project at Westbrook Field Elementary School, which is doors and windows. Those doors and windows are long overdue. We also qualify for a roof project at Quaybog Regional Middle High School. So this year, we're gonna put in for both those projects and hopefully get one of them. And then if we do get one, then we would come back to the towns and let them know how that would affect what we can do moving forward. We do need a roof at Quaybog, but we really do need doors and windows at Westbrook Field as well. The nice part about it is MSBA comes out and does facility visits every five years. They're coming out on February 18th and 19th to look at Warren Elementary, at Quaybog, and at Westbrook Field. So during those conversations, we'll see where we're gonna have the most luck in terms of applying for some of those grants. As the town of Warren knows, we use that to do the doors and windows at Warren Elementary School about six years ago, or maybe even longer than that. It was my last year over there, so it was probably seven years ago. We did all the doors and windows there at a fraction of the cost because MSBA, I think at the time, paid 78% of the cost, and 22% went to the district and the town.
Do you have a quick question?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Who has a question?
I do.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. About the grant for the, for Westbrook Field, for the doors and windows.
Yep.
Is that a matching grant? Is there anything that towns have to pay or anything?
Yep. So the percentage that the state will pay will come out. Anywhere, typically it ranges anywhere from 70 to 84%. So for example, the doors and windows at Warren Elementary School, I wanna say was close to like 800,000, and the state paid for close to 80% of it, and the town was responsible for the other 20%.
So Westbrook Field would be paying that 20%?
Westbrook Field, yep. Yep, that wouldn't reflect-
Warren would be responsible for it.
No, no. If it was the roof at Quaybog, then we would look at that 60-40 split.
Shared district.
Shared district-wide, yep. So that's why I put the, that's why I wanna talk to you a little bit, just in case we get the roof and not the doors and windows, we would have that conversation, but the roof at Quaybog's gonna be a super expensive one, as you can imagine.
They always are.
Yeah, millions of dollars. So I just wanna make sure that's on the select board's, not agenda, but on their radar. Eventually, we'll have to do that. I can't thank Town Administrator Ferrera enough. We did apply for a Community Compact Information Technology Grant. Jim did a great job of working with our Technology Director, Chris LaJoy. Today, Jim put in for a grant for Warren Elementary School for $161,493. You know, I think that our relationship with the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, and the Finance Committee has improved so much that we're now looking at ways that we can help each other out. So Jim, I can't thank you enough for doing that.
No problem. You have to do it. Fingers crossed, hopefully we get it.
That's it. That's it. So Jim and I were on the phone a few times, and we got that all squared away today. So thank you very much for taking care of that. Chief Lavoy, once again, thank you for your continued partnership with the Fire Academy and the gentlemen that do it. We were able to swear in another junior volunteer last, in January. Asher Sargent was sworn in as a junior firefighter and has aspirations of becoming an EMT and paramedic and attending the Fire Academy. The beautiful thing about it is we still have her for two more years at Quaybog, so the experience that she's gonna get under the tutelage of the Warren Fire Department and the EMT program and then the Fire Academy is gonna speak volumes. I don't know how many that is now, Adam, but-
Five, I believe.
Five.
She actually attended her first training last night with us internally. We're doing our first responder research this, starting last night, so she met the group last night for the first time and-
That is awesome. So that's great news. Our CNA program, they do their clinical rotations at Quaybog on the Common. We had 13 students that went out and they went to Quaybog on the Common for three full days and did their rotations on how to be a CNA. After that, we had four of our students apply for a position at Quaybog on the Common, and they've already accepted positions there. And they'll take their, they'll take their CNA test very shortly, and then they'll be certified nurse assistants, and they're starting their phlebotomy course now, so they'll get CNA phlebotomy and then the opportunity to do EKG, which will make them qualified to be an emergency room technician, which is outstanding coming out of high school. So these programs are serving our communities well, and that's what we try to, try to foster. I will be scheduling budget presentation with the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee in the near future. Stay tuned as the preliminary budget is out, and, but this will change a little bit. We are in the process of contract negotiations, which is gonna be a driver of our budget. Thank you to Town Administrator Ferrera for joining the contract and negotiation team. One member of either town, it can't be one member from each town, one member of either town, it usually goes back and forth between Warren and Westbrook Field, can request to be on that committee. They're not appointed, they request to be on, and then the school committee takes them in. So Jim, I can't thank you enough for sitting through those meetings with us, and I'd also like to thank Ray Capaco from the Finance Committee. We have silent observers this year for union representatives and for towns, so if you ever wanna come to contract negotiations, you're more than welcome to sit in as a silent observer. You're not able to participate in the meeting, but you can listen to how it goes. Okay? And we're doing everything we can to work as hard as we can with that. We will have a first responder luncheon again this year on April 18th. I'll keep that posted, but the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager are invited. Chief Mallett and Chief Lavoy and the CERT team, and then the State Police, and all the other folks that take part in our Safety Committee will be there as well.
Sorry, what day was it?
April 18th. It's the Friday before April vacation.
What is it?
It's a first responder luncheon, so we invite all the local safety officials, police, fire, CERT team, State Police, Homeland Security. Last year, I probably had 25 people there. And we partner with Country Bank, and they come in, and our students recognize all our first responders in our community for everything that they do to help support the safety of our schools and communities. And last but not least is difficult news. I do have some sad news to share. Unfortunately, Quaybog Regional Middle High School Principal Casey Handfeld has been having a courageous battle with cancer for over a year. Unfortunately, he will not be returning to Quaybog at this time. Okay? So I have spoken with both town managers, the police and fire from both towns, 'cause he was in it to grow part of obviously the school community and the safety committees that we have. So I did wanna let the Board of Selectmen know that officially that's where we're at.
That's terrible.
Yep. That's what I have for right now.
Thank you, Steve. Definitely, it's, besides the last bullet, everything else is wonderful. Definitely, I will, I'm excited about all the kids doing all these studies and definitely I won't be a volunteer to get blood out, but I can be a volunteer for the EKG.
We do take, we do take volunteers.
I'm afraid of needles.
Yeah.
I was a guinea pig.
Yep.
Yeah, I was asking, I was like, no, no, no.
It's good for the kids.
Thank you very much. You guys have any questions?
I just, I have a question on the transportation bid.
Yep.
So there were two finalists, so did you pick one yet?
Well, we did the lowest bidders. It was between Lizak and McCarthy. McCarthy was lower for some runs, and Lizak was lower for runs, so we went to the lowest bidder on those runs, and the configuration stays identical to what we have now.
Were the bids close?
They were in the, yeah, they were in the ballpark.
Okay.
They're $20 apart on some runs. We did it by run this year.
Okay.
We've done it five years, we've done it three years, we've done by lot, we've done by run, and the best way that you can do it is to do it by run. And I'll speak on behalf of the person that did the bid. You're always better off having two people actually do your runs, because then you don't, you create competition. If there's only one person, then there's no competition. If there's no competition, then sometimes that can drive the cost up, as you know.
Yeah, sure.
So right now, the routes and everything, everything just remain the same? Nothing's changed?
Yep.
Other than an 8% increase?
Other than an 8% increase, yep.
Okay.
So that's where we're at.
Okay. I got a couple things.
Sure.
In preparation for the budget season, I'd like to see employee salaries and stipends, bonuses, extras that each employee's getting, if you can get a copy of all that for them. And I think it's getting to the point where we discussed that we want them to redo the regional agreement, and the town is gonna take a point where we initiate our privilege of being able to start that process. I know we've discussed that. I don't know, we've got to take a formal vote, put it on a meeting thing, but we've discussed it a few times, because the regional agreement is expired, it's outdated, it needs to be updated, and we discussed some of the changes with that. So I think that's something we need to start discussing too, so they can prepare for it.
And, yeah, so what I will say is the regional agreement does not expire, even though you may think it does. Regional agreements do not expire by law. The other piece is the school committee is responsible for the regional agreement. With the, we can have discussions with the towns around that, but I just wanna be very clear about that. And I wanna be very clear that the regional agreement is not expired. That's all.
So you don't have anything to do with it in terms of negotiation?
School committee.
Yeah, be a school committee.
Yep. The school committee owns the regional agreement.
Right.
And then if they make changes to the regional agreement, it goes to the towns to be voted on.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, the town can participate and recommend what needs to be voted on by the town, and the school would have to accept that.
Yep. Once again, I'm just letting you know that that's where we're at. That's all. And we will be looking at the regional agreement as well.
Okay.
Okay. We've discussed that already.
Steve, the regionalization, it's out of the equation now?
It is, yep. Yep, that was voted down by the school committee, because it was inconclusive whether it be beneficial to the towns of Warren or Westbrook Field.
Yeah.
In our prior meetings, I said that if I thought it would be beneficial, I would stand on the hill and fight for it. Because it was inconclusive, I just didn't see a benefit to take a chance that costed the towns money.
Yeah.
And I can just go one more thing. Just to reiterate, last time you met with us and discussed the budget, you assured us that the budget was gonna continually go down each year?
I would never, I can't control whether the budget, and I could never assure the town that the budget would go-
That was your goal?
Of course, it's my goal. My goal is always to keep the budget as low as possible. I can tell you that we went into a budget for fiscal year '25 with a close to 2% increase, which I think was probably one of the lower budgets within the town. I didn't ask for anything at special town meeting that could have been reflected in FY '25 budget when the budget was voted on. Our goal is always to have the lowest budget, to find ways to offset the budget, whether it's energy efficiency, whether it's contract negotiations, we do our best to keep the budget low. I would never stand in front of you and tell you that I'm gonna bring a lower budget than I did last year, because I couldn't say that. That's, that's absolutely inaccurate. I would never say that. It's my goal to keep the lowest budget, I'll be clear about that, because as you are, I'm a taxpayer as well, but it's also my goal to advocate and fight for what the children of Warren and Westbrook Field need. So to say that I said that is absolutely inaccurate.
So the children are absolutely priority. We want them to have the best.
Yep.
But there's ways of giving them the best and still being financial conscious.
Yep, I agree. That's why I'm the superintendent of schools, 'cause it's my job to advocate for the education of kids. That's my area specialty.
And you're doing a good job with all that.
Yep.
So it's not that, we just gotta be focused on the budget too, and making sure every penny is being spent wisely.
I couldn't agree more, and I can tell you that last year, we came with the best budget that we could. Didn't ask for anything that was out of reason, and I'll continue to do that every year, but I would never say that the budget's going down.
Yeah, last year was pretty good. We, I don't think any of us had an argument or anything, and we seen it going in the right direction, and we were pleased with that, that it was, you didn't come to us with $1.7 million above minimum contribution again, and, you know, we were, I guess, satisfied with what was going on, and it was going in the right direction.
And I will continue to do that, and I'll continue to advocate and fight for that, but I will never say, I will never say that the budget is going down.
I-
It's just, I'll do my best to keep it as low as we can.
I appreciate everything you do, and, you know, I thank you for being here tonight. I think it's, it shows a lot, and we, we, definitely we have very special people in town, and in this room, there are many of them, at least four or five that I can count with, and you're one of them. Thank you very much.
No, I appreciate it, and I appreciate your support as always. Thank you.
Moving on, we're gonna review and discuss the classification and compensation study conducted by the Collins Center at UMass Boston, with recommendations on its implementation anticipated vote.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So before you this evening is an agenda item that was on last week's agenda. I know that we were missing a board member last week, and we wanted to make sure we had a full board before you this evening for consideration on this. I just wanna emphasize the process that has transpired for the Collins Center to get where they got with their final report. This process started back in September last year, and the Collins Center came in, they gave an introduction, they provided questionnaires to all the staff, they've asked, they gave staff time to respond to the questionnaires. When they got all the responses back for the questionnaires, they set up interviews, individual interviews with Collins Center staff and our staff to interact and to, you know, talk about the responses that they gave to their questionnaires, to discuss their duties and responsibilities as part of their, you know, as part of what they do on daily basis, to understand their roles here in Warren. And then ultimately, from that discussion, they created and updated everybody's position description, job description. They transmitted that to department heads for their review and authorization, and then ultimately, they did a market study after they've competed, after they've completed all of their findings within the position descriptions, so they completed a market study. The market study came back and ultimately came to what is before you this evening is a wage scale, a proposed wage scale. So it was kind of a long process, about five months in the making, but it was, it was done in, with staff here and the staff at the Collins Center. I appreciate everybody's participation and cooperation through this process. I know that it can be a daunting task, you know, going through this and in doing all of this research, but it was done in a professional and accurate way to make sure that, number one, we're paying our employees correctly and that they're getting fair wages. So with that, as mentioned at the last meeting, there was some recommendations that I had made above and beyond the Collins Center, which was, number one, to move the highway foreman and mechanic's position from a grade C to a grade B. Move the sewer operator mechanic in highway heavy equipment operator from grade D to grade C. Start the scale of the position of firefighter EMT at $22.86, which is a step four in the report. And start the scale for the position of sewer chief operator at $36.04 per hour, and that's a step six in the report. The reason why we're suggesting these, I am suggesting these modifications, as you may recall, three years ago, when the current wage scale was being negotiated, you know, there was increases that were given to highway, and in order to keep in line with that trajectory, we, you know, I am recommending that these, that this change in these classifications and these groups be made, as well as it is noted that in these particular positions, heavy equipment operators require special licensers, sewer operator mechanic requires special licensers, and as well as the mechanic and highway foreman have special knowledge and skills and certifications required for those positions. Now, taking in mind, you know, of how the implementation could potentially go, it is recommended that whatever hourly rate an employee is currently at, that we would add 2% to that and then place them on the appropriate wage scale, you know, that is before you in front of the Collins Center. There is a draft that we had, that I had put together with, with a chart that is similar to the existing wage scale that we have in place now. The, the implementation should be noted that wherever anybody is currently on the wage scale does not, does not reflect where they will be on the new wage scale. And so that needs to be, if this is approved tonight, we do have a department head meeting scheduled for Tuesday of next week, so I can let staff know what the implementation will be on this and how it will transpire. So that, that needs to be made clear to staff that if they're at a step five on the wage scale, you know, and they're thinking that they're gonna go to a six on the new wage scale, that's not necessarily true, and that doesn't mean that, that you're gonna be losing any money. Nobody is losing any money in this, in this scale, in this calculation. Okay? The overall implementation, estimated implementation of this particular wage scale is, I'm estimating it at around $50,000. So I'm more than happy to, you know, answer any questions that you may have. I know that we had received a correspondence from our town clerk. I think everybody had received that with regards to that request, and I'd be more than happy to speak on that if the board would like to. uh with regards to that request, and I'd be more than happy to, to speak on that if the board would like to.
So, um, with regards to, to the request, um, the request um is, is, is for the position of assistant town clerk. Assistant town clerk um currently um is at nineteen twenty-nine an hour. Um, her request is to move uh to a different scale, um, with different classification, uh which is a um step, a grade C on the wage scale, uh which would move that to twenty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents an hour. And that would be an increase of five dollars and forty-nine cents per hour, which would be the highest increase uh a- across the board of any individual on the, on, on the plan that is before you this evening. Um, so, um, you know, in looking at where the position is, is currently um at, which is a, a grade D, there are other positions within the grade D that match that particular position. Uh, the Collins Center feels that, um, that um instead of um, you know, uh, you know, that, that they, that they're uh all grouped together as, as departmental um assistance. Um, is there, is there a new title, uh instead of um a secretary, um departmental assistants? Um, there's the highway, um, which is a, um, which is um uh around nineteen eighty-seven uh a- an hour uh for a departmental assistant. Building and planning is currently at twenty-one dollars and seventy-one cents an hour. A police administrative assistant is at a twenty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. The sewer administrative assistant, or departmental assistant, is at nineteen dollars and seventy-eight cents uh per hour. And the COA meals coordinator is at twenty-one dollars and three cents. Um, they're all relatively in the, um, in the, in the nucleus or the general area of, of where this particular category of assistant town clerk um is. Um, and again, this is all based on information that was provided by the employee in the department head to the Collins Center of where these groupings would take place. Um, so it's based upon that. Um, you know, currently, in our current wage scale, um, it, it, it is noted that, um, you know, most of these positions starting in fiscal year twenty-five are at seventeen oh six an hour, most of these positions. There's some of these positions are in a different group that are at eighteen seventy-three an hour. So, you know, everybody is going to be getting um an increase here. Um, s- you know, depending on where you are in your steps and, and depending on, you know, where you have been with the town, um, varies. Um, however, um, you know, uh, it should be noted that um the assistant town clerk has, has, um, you know, stepped up and has made significant, um, you know, uh contributions and significant um help uh in another department in the Board of Health, um, as of recently, um, when we had a um, a maternity leave. So, um, it's always a very difficult um decision when it comes down to um, uh, you know, classifications and salaries and wages. Um, however, the recommendation um by the clerk, or the suggestion by the clerk, um, I think is um too extreme at this point. The board may wanna consider, because this is a new um scale, the board may wanna consider, um, you know, maybe uh adjusting uh the assistant town clerk position to a step two on the current scale of where they're at.
Yeah, I.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I can't, I don't, I'm not in favor of moving, with, the way this is designed, you have all these assistants in grade D. And then if you look at C, it's like the next level up, you know, of people, so I can't. I don't know that moving that job to a different block makes sense. I am okay if we, you know, she's done a lot of work.
Yes, she has.
And if we wanna bump her up to a step two, and then she would be more in line with.
With the rest of, with the rest of the employees.
Yeah, you know. How, how long has she been working for the town?
Little over three years, maybe, just shy of four.
Okay.
She was originally part-time in um, in the treasurer's office.
And she's only step one still?
No, 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 she's, she's gotten steps. She's um, she's currently.
I thought you said she's a step one, and we're gonna put her to step two.
I think the new.
No, the new scale would be at step one. She's currently at um a step two on the, on the, on the, on the current scale. So, the new wage scale would be um right now a step one, potentially, if you, if you were to move it a step two.
So, she received, we gave the two percent, gave the two percent increase, and then the next higher, because we don't wanna lower anybody, we're not taking away.
Nobody's getting lowered.
Yeah, just, we're not lowering her pay or anybody's pay. Um, in the next higher step from her current one with the two percent, what would that be?
That would be um twenty dollars and thirty-two cents. That would be a step two.
So, she'd be a step two anyways?
Yes. But again, steps from la- from the current wage scale to this wage scale mean nothing.
Right. I'm just looking at where she would be, because if we're saying, oh, let's put her at a step two because we we wanna give it to her for experience and doing a great job and, and move her up a little bit on that, that wage scale, well, she'd be on a step two anyways. So, we're not doing that for her. We're not giving it to her based on her experience. She would've been a step two anyways.
No, she would've been a step one.
She would've been a step one.
Right now, if we don't do anything, she's a step one.
She's a step one. She, she's currently in a step two.
Correct.
With her pay currently, and you put two percent onto that.
Yes, that would move her to a step one on the new wage scale.
That, she would still be a step one?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, so that's why moving her to a step two would give her a little bump.
Yeah. Can, can I make a pause?
Yes, sir.
I wanna explain that thing about the scale, and maybe this will help a little bit. Let's say this is a two-meter box, okay? And that's the scale that we are right now, the little one.
A little more on the camera.
Okay, so now we're moving into a new scale of feet. Now, instead of having two meters, we're gonna have six feet. So, wherever you were before, you're gonna end up in another number, but it's not gonna mean you're gonna receive less.
Correct.
Yeah. So, I agree with you, what is, what you say about, yeah, she will mechanically will end up on one, but we're trying to make that a good thing and bump it into a two?
If that, if that's the board's discretion, if that's.
Instead of the, instead of the five percent? Right, that's the, they're talking about a five percent?
No, no, the proposal would be a twenty-five percent raise.
Yeah, so we, the proposal would be to move her from a D to a C.
To a C.
And what step on a C?
Step one.
So, she'd be a step one on a C, but the problem with the C is the step on the C, it doesn't marry up with her position.
Right.
So, we'd have to change her position. She'd have to have added duties to rate a C. And I think her position is what her position is, and hey, she's getting a raise, you know, in the end. Everybody's getting a, getting a little more money than what they got last time. So, nobody's losing any.
Why is that two percent increase raised to, across the board, that because the study says it should be, you're a little low, you should be hired?
It's a policy decision, so typically, you know, um, there's a, a two percent, you know, and, and you know, I know the town doesn't have quote-unquote a COLA, a cost of living, uh adjustment, but, you know, that's essentially what it is, um, you know, um.
Yeah, everything's going up. Look at the transportation, the school, eight percent. Well, did um FinCom have a say on this? Did they came back at you?
They haven't, no, they haven't met, they haven't mentioned anything. I did email it, uh, the um, the report to them, so they did get the Collins Center report.
So, they could either support it or not support it. If we approve it, they can depend at town meeting if they support it or not. And what's the feedback from the departments?
Uh, that's the only email that I received um from anybody, um, and this has been out now for
Did you?
For some time.
Did you raise your hand? Yes, Mr. Chairman, so I, can I, I guess I would just say on behalf, I, what's that?
What do you?
Oh, sorry. I'm the fire chief. So, I, I just, maybe speaking on behalf of the employees, I didn't know that there was an open comment section on this cuz we really haven't seen it. We haven't seen the one that aligns with what the old one looks like, so we're kind of, this came out right when budgets are supposed to be due, so there really hasn't. In my opinion, I, I would still like to see the budget calendar pushed back a little bit more, because I feel like this is a lot to take in, and no one's really seen where this is even at, and, and if departments were supposed to comment on it, that was never even discussed, so I didn't know that, uh, you know, we were, had the ability to do that, cuz I didn't know, and, and the way that the Collins Center has it, they kind of have it in the lower end, starting lower than we already are, so it's a little bit confusing there, and I don't know what Mr. Ferrara's drafted, I haven't seen that, so, you know, I'm just trying to.
We haven't, the reason why you haven't seen it is because we haven't even accepted it yet.
Yes, and I understand, but our budgets are due now next Thursday, and we're not gonna see it till Tuesday, so it's a lot to kinda take in to kinda have any, any discussion on it at all, and I just wanna make sure that we can all draft a budget appropriately with those numbers coming in, and where they're gonna sit.
I would make the recommendation, if it's okay with you, Mr. Ferrara, um, push back the budget being due for a couple weeks, okay? Meet with the depart- department heads with whatever we approved tonight, so they have a, a time to look at it. And then at next selectmen's meeting, if they have any comments or concerns or anything, we can address those at our next Thursday meeting. If that's, if everything's good and kosher, then that's what we'll go with in front of the town. But, and that's what they can plan for with their budget, but I know, I know the timeframe, you wanna get to that timeframe, but this affects people's lives, you know, they, they need to adjust this. Departments need to be able to, time to look at it and review it. And I would like their feedback if they do have some serious concerns, because we've looked at it, but we're not the experts on this. And we could sit there and say, okay, I think you should do this, but there could be a flaw with the Collins Center report and what we adopt. And I'd like to know what that flaw is, if a, if a department finds one or has an issue with it, they can, we can address it then before it goes in front of the town and we make fools of ourselves.
That, that's certainly fine. I just wanna also let the board know that budgets were supposed to be due today. So, I extended budgets another week as part of, as part of this ongoing um, uh, report that has been released. And, and departments did have uh the Collins Center report emailed to them last week, as per your request, so um.
But that's not what they want, that's not the actual paid scale we're doing. You're adjusting it a little bit.
Yeah, but it was included in the, in the email.
No.
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 Does it?
No.
Oh.
No, so I mean, I mean.
So, we should have.
These modifications, yeah, these modifications are, are what was recommended. But the actual report is, is what, since, you know, went out to every department.
Okay, so everybody has the report.
Correct.
But they don't have this updated.
Yeah, this, this, this has not been approved yet, so I didn't wanna release anything.
That's all I was trying to point out, was that the actual wage scale, nobody has actually seen, so we're just trying to get.
But the wage scale is in the report.
The, the Collins Center?
Yes, it is, the wage scale's in the Collins Center report, so departments do have that.
But, but we don't, didn't know where the selectmen were gonna truly start on their own wage scale with that, I, I think, I think.
Well, we're waiting for a decision.
That, that's what I'm saying, but all I'm saying is it, it's gonna be tough to create a budget in a couple of days if we just, you know, I, that's my only fear, if we're not gonna see it till Tuesday, and you know, the, the report mentioned that there was like ten or twelve towns that were, you know, solicited to, you know, supply a response, but they never gave what those towns responded.
Those would be all the surrounding towns.
Right, but I, again, you know, did they, did they, my question is, did they?
So, the towns that were used are actually listed in the comments?
Yes, yes, and I saw that, but did they actually publish what they sent back?
Yeah, the actual values.
I, I'm just curious, cuz I, you know, I mean, uh, when I go back to, to our people, and when Chief Mala goes back to his people, I think that they would just wanna know, like, what did those towns come back at? What are they making? It'd be a little bit easier for us to justify to our people, like, okay, this is where they, these numbers came from as.
Well, I mean, I don't think the Collins Center would lie.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm just asking if there was any additional paperwork that came back with that that says where that was, or that's not part of the report. They just solicited that information.
Yeah, so it's more of a, a, you know, an executive summary level.
Okay. Well, like I said, I, I, again, not trying to throw a stick in it, I just, I'm just worried about the time crunch between, you know, where this budget is and where this has come back at very quickly, you know, and, and this, and I, and I, and again, it's not that I, I would've, may have just, you know, looked at it, I was just waiting for the board's direction to, to create the budget, and, you know, and, and that's, that's all I'm saying, is that I just, just a, a few more days would be helpful for the budget.
So, if, if we approve this tonight, release it, and then um settle on it next week, would that be enough time?
Yeah, I just think it would give a little bit of extra time, and I, and I'm not trying to imply, I, 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 that I'm advocating for, for departments to jockey for position and make all kinds, that's not what I'm saying, it's just ma- basically looking at it, trying to, trying to figure out where it sits and, and what's going on with it, is all I'm saying, because I mean, you know, it's, it's, you know, a lot of it's three-quarters of our budget to look at salaries and stuff, so just trying to make sure it's gonna work to get, get it in on time.
So, I, I would make the recommendation to, if we're gonna do it, we approve this tonight, give the departments till next Thursday to come back with comments or concerns or anything about the budget. If we need to make an adjustment, cuz they found something that's not accurate or does, isn't kosher with the, the way the town's going, then we can make an adjustment.
Yeah.
And then, that's, that's their budget, that's what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
But it gives them guidance and time to look at, and if, I would say the budget would have to be bu- doing two weeks then. I know it's pushing you back and you're time crunching, yeah.
I, I would like to, um, you know, talk to the FinCom too, um, because they're gonna be doing, you know, their budget and, you know, review as well. Um, so I, I, hopefully I can get ahold of them early next week.
That, that'd be nice, and let them know, but FinCom's an advisory committee, and we'd like their opinion of it. Um, but they don't need to approve the budget for us, as far as uh approving the wage scale. We need to work that, and the department heads can't work that until they know what we have for sure for a number.
And I'm, and I'm glad it's being put in that format, cuz I think we're all familiar with that. It looks a little, you know, it looks a little bit better, and it's easier for us to understand, because the way the Collins Center was, it, it was starting people lower than they currently are, so we didn't know whether or not, you know, I didn't expect anyone to lose any money, and I know Mr. Ferrara said that, and I didn't think we were. It's just more, just trying to figure out exactly where it's gonna sit, that's all.
It gives people more room to move on the scale. When you got a fifteen-step scale, it gives you more room to move over the years, so you, you're not hitting your ten-year mark and being maxed out. And then still, well, I got another ten years to go, or another fifteen years to go, and I can't go anywhere.
Yeah.
I'm maxed out. So, we don't want people to become stagnant in their jobs where they, they don't have room, room.
And, and I mean, it, it, that's up to the board. I mean, I wasn't suggesting two weeks, I, I was just looking for a few extra days just to draft it after Tuesday, that's, that's all.
Well, you, you won't know the final numbers till everything's settled next week, and then departments are gonna need to be able to adjust to that. So, we can't say, okay, department, have your budget ready the next morning, cuz that wouldn't be fair either, cuz things are moving. You just wanna make sure you have plenty of time to figure it out and do.
And I understand they're under a time crunch, I'm not trying to screw that, I just, you know, even just one week, I think, would be sufficient to, to just look at it, be able to draft it, I mean. I mean, they, just a few extra days from Tuesday to Thursday, you know, that's a short period of time.
Yeah, so we'll approve it. They'll have it tomorrow morning. Then we'll talk about it on Tuesday at the department head meeting, right? So there's, and then Thursday.
You can entertain any type of comments from departments.
Fine tuning and then, yeah. So I-
Say something, Mr. Dusty?
I would. Um, we stepped, started at a minimum, so step one now are minimum. Is that how you're doing it? Okay, cause that was the question that I, when I looked at this, I went, wait a minute. Okay, how does that work?
Yeah, I'm, I'm five eight and I'm going into a new scale, one point seventy-three plus two.
Okay.
Just, that's the, that's the basic, then the rest will, will try to deal with it.
So where are we going here from here? Are we just giving them to next week?
No, I say we should, well, we should vote on this.
Well, yes, we should vote on it. We, we should vote if we're gonna accept the changes that are referenced by you. And then the scale will have to be, well, you already have it adjusted?
I can, I can do it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not. So you have to readjust the scale.
Yeah.
Redispers that to the employees and say-
No, disperse it to the employees. Uh, this has never been dispersed, you're right.
Well, from, separate from the Collins.
Yeah.
And put out to the employees, say, this is what the town has adopted.
No, the skill, this, this, this draft includes my recommendations.
It does.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is ready to go if we accept it.
Yes.
So that, that one's adjusted already. So we vote on this, accept this, accept your recommendations. Accept the scale. And then you're, you're gonna propose it to-
I'll explain it to the department heads on Tuesday.
Tuesday. So on Wednesday, well, on Thursday, if they have concerns, are we gonna address those concerns?
I will ask them to email me any concerns that they may have, so that I can bring them before the board.
Could email them or they can present them if they wanna come to the meeting and present them, because they might be more willing to articulate it and defend their position, because we have, if we have concerns, then we could sit there and discuss it with them, why? You know, whether it's a department head or not.
It would be nice to have an email, send you what your concerns and if you wanna participate and express also, let me know.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
That would be great.
Otherwise, if, if it's just, oh, is he coming or not coming?
I just don't want anybody turning around and saying, well, I wasn't given an opportunity.
Yeah.
Let's give them the opportunity, so if they wanna vo- verbally say something, talk to us about it, they can.
But they have to tell you that they wanna come and say it. If they just wanna send you an email explaining, that's good too. Black and white is the best.
And if they're not here, they're not here.
Then I'm assuming that they don't have an issue with it.
And say, if you don't have an issue, you don't need to reply to this message.
So if we do that and you guys, that will give you guys time to adjust your budgets unless you have something that's a concern. So we can, theoretically, we can do the budgets next week then, unless a department actually has a concern with the pay scale.
Yeah, I'm gonna be two inches taller.
Well, they might find something and say, hey, this is not what we're getting paid at all and it actually, we're, we are getting less. You're saying we're not, but we are. Well, come and defend that point. Why do you think you are?
Yeah.
You know?
That gives the opportunity for everybody to, you know, participate and if they agree, silence. We take over. Okay, so do we need any more discussion about voting tonight for this?
No, I, I think I'm good and I think everybody did a really good job, participation. I'd like more input from the employees when they actually see what we're putting out or the department heads, and if there is an issue. And department heads need to make sure their employees know, you are not losing money. Reiterate that. I know you put it in your email and you were pretty clear on it, but I think people are still concerned, like, oh my God, I'm gonna lose, I'm going down two dollars now.
Well, I think the worst concern is-
And you're not.
I'm at four, now I'm gonna be a two.
Well, it's, you gotta look at the pay though.
Yeah, you gotta look at the pay.
You gotta look at the pay. Don't look at the number, the step number. Look at the pay. You're not losing pay.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have anything?
No.
Okay, just make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations on its implementation of the wage scale.
Do I have a second? Second? All in favor?
David Dufresne, I.
Richard Harker, I.
Derek Melis, I. Motion approved.
Thank you. And are, are, are you going to act tonight on the, um, on the town clerk's request?
No, but make, they can come in and, you know, make their recommendations if we need to adjust it then.
Oh, well, no, she, well, she sent an email. We could just do it now if we want to.
As far as implementing her to a higher position?
Well, that, I think that was her request.
That's not on the agenda though.
No, it was part of the wage discussion.
Yeah.
I think you're looking at moving somebody from a different. That wasn't part of your recommendations though, and part of the scale. It's not part of this scale as adjusted.
So then we would just say no. It was a request and we say no.
Well, they can make the request if they, when you're discussing and if they wanna bring it to us for the next meeting. Cause that's to address these issues.
Okay.
And I think she's worried that she's gonna lose pay and be lower. She's not. That's not what she's worried about? She's actually making more money.
Yeah, to a point.
Well, you also can't move somebody on a pay scale when the pay scale's not written for that position in that grade. So if you wanna move somebody from a D to a C, what in their evaluation and their performance changes their job to put them in that position? Just because they do a good job in their current position doesn't mean they get classified as something different now.
Right, yeah, I agree.
But that has happened. That's the problem.
What do you mean that has happened? What about the board of health?
Two years ago, they moved her from being an assistant.
That was an article at a town meeting, yes.
Correct.
The town voted on that.
Correct.
Okay, but that's different than doing it here. This is, the thing is, this has been rejiggered now.
I understand.
So what happened in the past-
Oh, I understand, I get it.
Doesn't matter.
I'm just saying that, yeah.
And, and part of the study was to better fit, we had too many blocks, right?
Right.
And they were just kinda willy-nilly. They made no sense. So now, if you're an assistant administrative person, you know you're in a, you're at a grade D. Right? I mean, all these people are roughly the, you know, they're in the same kind of bucket on grade D, right? Administrative assistants, assistants to the clerk, the collector, the treasurer, the police, the sewer, you know, it's all like in the same.
And I don't think we can just change her position by a selectmen's vote. I think it has to go in front of the town.
Oh, this will, this, this will have to-
It has to be an article.
This will have to go in front of the-
Right.
Um, town meeting.
But changing individual positions from an assistant to another type of position, what, what is she going to from an assistant?
So, so the D to a C would, would be a different category.
Right.
And so, you know, if it's, if it's not recommended by the selectmen, then a, an article would have to be placed.
But see, grade C is administrator, a supervisor, an executive assistant. As opposed to administrator.
She's not a supervisor and she's not, she's an assistant in the office.
Yeah.
Well, I would say she's an executive assistant, cause she does exactly what the town clerk does. Exactly versus notary and payroll. I mean, that's, that's, that's just what I've heard.
Well, then that's for her to defend then, for the town clerk to defend. You know, again, she's hired as an assistant. So that's the position.
Alls I'm saying to the board is that what was recommended by the, by the town clerk would be the highest increase out of anybody on the wage scale at five dollars and forty-nine cents.
It's twenty-five percent increase.
Twenty-five percent increase.
It's huge, it's.
Yeah, I, I'm not really in favor with that, because you're taking somebody out of the assistant. If she's doing more, great for her, but she's an assistant to the town clerk. That is what the position is.
It's like, okay, go, go to the, um, assistant accountant. When the accountant's on vacation, the assistant accountant is doing everything the accountant does, but we're not gonna pay that person the same as the accountant. I mean, it's just the nature of the job.
It's not a supervisory position. She's not supervising anybody, so there's not any money related to that.
I'll say this, if the assistant clerk screws up, who gets in trouble? It is the town clerk.
Right.
So-
It's not the assistant.
The town clerk is responsible for the office. The assistant is there to assist, right? And, and it doesn't have the same responsibility or level of responsibility.
These are very tough decisions. They get a lot of emotion. I wish we could give our employees a lot more money. But at the end of the day, you know, it, you know, this is what the market brings.
What do you think?
Well, you know how about, how I think about opinions, but, um, I, I, it sounds like a, a different position. You know, it sounds like they're asking for, I don't wanna have a assistant anymore, I wanna have an executive as, what did you say, executive? Assistant instead of the assistant. Maybe if they come and, when everybody has the opportunity to come and talk about it, is that something we have to decide right now?
Uh, that was just a, um, a, you know, a, a, an email that had sent to us, um, by the clerk, you know, as her, part of her comments to the report that, uh, she received. So I just wanna make sure the board was aware of that.
Okay. And like you said, as much as we would love to have everybody, you know, we, we it's, you know, it, it, it's not coming out of our pockets. We have a budget, we have, you know, if we do this.
Well, it is coming out of our budget, pockets, because it's town money.
Well, that, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is, we're taking a decision based on everybody's tax money. It's not something that we just, oh yeah, they, they can get more. I know how passionate and sensitive people can be and, you know, um, it's not like I wanna say yes or no right now, it's just that, you know, it sounds like a different position.
It does. And I mean, these are standardized, right? This is sort of like across the state, here's what-
Well, I mean, this is, this is-
Administrative assistants are grouped, you know, these similar duties, you know.
And, and, again, it, it draws us back to the process. So the process was a questionnaire, an interview, a, a, a position description, a review of the position description by the department head. So there was a process as to how these groupings and categories were created. So that's how, what the Collins Center did to establish this.
Right. Which was the point of having this study in the first place. It's just sort of standardized.
We need to take the recommendations of what it is and-
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So I, I'm not in favor of moving her. If she wants to come to a meeting and discuss why it needs to be increased, maybe that needs to be something brought in front of the town as an article to change the position description. And then she would go to a, a grade C or class E or whatever. But, um, right now, her position description is for what it is. It's on the D scale.
Yeah.
But I, you know, in, 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 you know, I support a hundred percent all our staff here, you know, shh, this person did step up. So I mean, if the board wanted to, um, you know, do something in terms of a step, you know, you know, that's within the discretion of the board too.
But that's supposed to be requested from the supervisor based on, because I believe we established that where we said, hey, the supervisor comes to us with a recommendation and that person, okay, they're doing well, they're doing more above and beyond. They've ga- gained all these schools, they had all this experience, this person's an asset to me now and request it.
And, and you can do that, because this is a whole new scale, right?
Well, I, I think the email was compelling that she has done a lot of work and is doing a good job. And she's also, you could say, a bit underpaid compared to the same people in that class with similar, um, time with the town, et cetera. So bumping her up one step.
I, I'm, I'm willing to bump, bump a step or so based on experience and stuff, but that specifically needs to be addressed by the supervisor and that recommendation being requested. Because right now, they're being requested to be moved to a completely different scale, which isn't her position.
So what do you want? You want the town clerk to just redo the letter if she's willing to, to say, I would request, you know, a bump in step?
What is she specifically requesting if, to be moved on that scale and based on that person's experience?
Okay.
I would say that, that's fair, but like you guys, I'm not in favor of moving somebody out of the scale and then putting them on something else that favors them. Cause that causes a slippery slope, because now everybody's gonna be like, well, I'm more of an executive assistant. And then we gotta move everybody and then we don't have any assistants anymore.
Yeah.
That position's gone.
Right.
And then people are getting overpaid for what they're doing.
Right. Cause that means twenty-five percent raises for like a bunch of people.
Yes.
Which is fabulous, but we can't do it.
It's a slippery slope.
Yeah.
So kind of like the, the board is not accepting that as it is into this scale theme or bullet? But rather have her come to us as a supervisor suggesting that step up?
Okay.
Yeah.
I, like, I, the way I see it, I see no relationship of the request to what we're doing right now.
Right.
It's a different, just a different request.
Okay. I can relay the message.
Yeah, tell, tell, we're not saying no. We, it's just not.
Exactly what she wants to do.
Yeah, it's not the way to do it. Thank you for the whole thing. Uh, discussion on the computer upgrade plan with a review of a, of a proposal from Entree Technologies, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, as you may recall, this was on our last week's agenda. This particular item, um, is a proposal by Entree Technologies to do the, uh, computer upgrades that, uh, we had received a twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollar grant, state grant for, as well as we have approximately thirty thousand dollars in, um, reserved money, uh, from town meeting uh, to, uh, complete the project. Our goal here is to use as little as town meeting money as possible, um, in, in, in using up the entire grant. However, um, we have an opportunity here, uh, to take care of, uh, the entire upgrade and, uh, potentially come in a little under budget. The proposal from Entree Technologies is from the state contract, uh, the IT contract. They are proposing, um, uh, the, uh, the, the switch out of, uh, those computers that are identified in your packets. Um, I have also reached out to the sewer commissioners. Uh, the sewer commissioners would be responsible for placing their computers. Um, and so I've, I've asked, uh, the sewer commissioners to take that up on their upcoming agenda so that they'd be paying for their upgrades again. The reason why we're trying to do these upgrades is to, um, uh, to make sure that we have computers that are cybersecurity, uh, uh, protected and, and to make sure that, uh, they will, uh, be functional, um, come this October. and and to make sure that, uh, they will, uh, be functional, um, come this October when, um, uh, Windows eleven will not be supported by some of these operating systems that are currently there.
Ten.
Ten.
The opposite way. The computers are so old, they cannot take the new.
Uh, the, the new updates. The computers are so old, they can't take the new updates. So, um, the proposal in front of you, um, I did, uh, I know, uh, Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned about keyboards, uh, on the side, uh, for the financial people, for the numbers. I did have a conversation, uh, with, uh, most of our financial people. I, I wanna check back with the assessors, um, but, um, the other, uh, individuals, they'd indicated to me that they use pretty much a, um, a wireless keyboard anyways. And they just, you know, use it through a, uh, through a USB port.
You weren't here and and I saw that the laptops that they proposed were the little fourteen inches. And those don't have the keyboard numbers on the side. You have to click the numbers on the top. And when, when I do numbers or, you know, math or anything, this thing on top is very difficult for me. But if they're fine with the, uh.
Yeah, I had a, I had a conversation with the, uh, with the, uh, with the collector who doesn't want a laptop. I had a collect, a conversation with the treasurer. She's okay with plugging in her wireless keyboard. I had a conversation with the town clerk. Um, she plugs in a wireless keyboard. I still have to circle back around with the assessors and the county.
Do they have the same size screen?
Yes.
So they're not going from a big one to a small one?
No, it's all the same.
Yeah, it's gonna, adding the keypad onto this, for example, would probably boost the cost too. Cause then you're gonna get a wider monitor.
Incredible now, the, these fourteen inches are more expensive than the big ones.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause people want light and small for travel, but here they don't need to travel.
Yeah.
I'd rather have a big screen and the, the ability to type in.
So with this, I think we made comments and we talked about how they could have their own laptops. They can even plug in their own monitors. They keep their monitors and they can plug it in if they need bigger monitors too. Um, they could just plug into a laptop and run it that way too. So they're not, we're not taking away their monitors or anything. We're not taking anything away from them and they can.
I don't think we knew laptops have EGA connection anymore.
Well, you get something like this goofy thing that I got.
They have USB.
So you said we have extra money, we came under budget?
Yeah, well, that came with the laptop.
It came with the laptop.
Yeah, it came with it.
Make sure it comes with the laptop.
You don't have like a.
It's a USB C and then it's got HDMI and a USB.
Oh.
So that's what they do now. So they, and then they just, so there's two USB and then.
Yeah.
USB and, uh, I don't know what the heck that is. I think it's an SD card or something.
So my recommendation was last week, because you weren't here, we wanted to make sure you had input on this. Because we're looking at either just doing a, the, the phase one and phase two. I, I think that's, we just do the both phases. Get them done. Get all the computers done one time and then we don't have to worry about it because they could go up in the time. By the time we do it, and then we're still dealing with the same problem. We're chasing computers that need to be upgraded. And if we just do the, all the upgrades, because we got the money.
Especially cause phase two's only six computers. I mean, if it divided and then half, then I could see, okay, you do like half and then you do half, but this is only.
Well, phase two is, is primarily a lot of laptops, I believe.
Okay.
All laptops.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, but it's.
I mean.
Yeah, we'd do it all at once.
Do it all at once.
Yeah, there you go, fifty bucks.
Because phase two is the computer in here too to replace his antique.
Fifty bucks?
Fifteen.
Oh, fifteen, okay.
Sorry, my accent.
So keep in mind, phase two will replace your antique in here.
Yeah, good.
So everybody can run from the one stationary.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, do that sooner than later, right? So we can just have it here and people can use it.
It'd be nice to get that put up in the ceiling someday. So it doesn't have to move.
Maybe we should think about doing that.
Rome wasn't built in a day.
No, well.
I think it was two or three days though, right?
What are the dimensions?
We're not building Rome either.
Do we have the footprint of the new desks? Do you have like a sense of how the new desk is gonna, how much is gonna go?
Yeah, we have a, we had a drawing, right?
Plan.
We had a plan.
Cause then this should, you know how sometimes we put it here and I move it back?
Well, it's gonna be back there more, over towards where that speaker is.
Probably right where that speaker is, right?
Yeah.
I think that's like.
Then it'll just be mounted there.
So it might be good to wait. When is that desk coming?
Couple months.
I think before we end up destroying this thing, get it moved.
Yeah.
We know where it's gonna be anyways and it's gonna detect us where we are anyways.
I would, yeah, I would say between, so with that mic where that's hanging, if you put it in that tile, right, that's out far enough. And as long as there's some extra cord, we could move it back or forth.
I, I don't even think those are being used anymore, are they?
Out of the topic, I'm sorry I brought it, but we can do some testing one day and see how that person looks from, you know, from that point. We can do that.
How about we ask Travis, because Travis was in charge of this. I don't think they, they're using those mics anymore. Cause we're using these in that. And I think the only one he really uses is the one in the back over the people if they say something.
Oh.
Here he comes.
Here he comes.
Yeah, the problem with this is if you're too close, you distort the phase of the person.
But took you so long.
I have short, little stubby legs. So the little speaker looking things, those are actually older microphones that we had.
And they're not used.
They're not used. The, the hanging ones were the ones that we switched to, um.
And those are used.
They're on and off. It depends if people actually come up here or not.
Oh, okay, alright.
We still use them for.
Do you use this one though?
We use both of them, cause this one kinda captures.
Yeah, yeah.
This part, this, the other one captures them. They can get pulled up a little bit though, um.
But if we put the owl right there, is it gonna affect?
I don't think so. I just might have to raise the microphone a little bit, which all that is, is just pulling the cord in.
Alright, I found it last time.
Yeah, you were able to flip us upside down last time.
Oh. No panel view.
Didn't have to be flipped upside down before you flipped it.
No.
You, yeah.
Now you're just freaking everybody out now.
To invert the video.
How about default settings? Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Oh, is it done over here?
What's up?
Did you sit down with?
What?
Yeah, that works.
Oh, why are you making me talk into it?
Can you move it further towards Travis though?
No, it will disconnect.
Oh, okay.
What's up with the blue color? It's kinda weird, huh?
The lighting, you can bring it back.
Now, everybody's.
It has to be somewhere over here, not too close.
The, the mouth is, so you'd wind up being like in the middle of one of the drop, of the panels.
Yeah.
Um, so if you probably went with like this one here, kinda near the edge, that should be on a right angle to cover over here. I think the only difficult one might be this front row, but.
What, is that a, uh, smoke detector, fire detector right there?
Yeah.
It's in the wrong place.
Chief, how far do we have to stay away from that smoke detector?
I don't know what's under that ceiling, so that may, the wiring is probably just to that. There's no probably conduit or anything, so you probably can get right close to it.
Okay, but it's not gonna affect if we put that in, or in, uh, within a foot or so of it, right?
Nope, because if that goes off, we got a bigger problem than the owl.
And al- and also should be five feet from the door over there. That's another story.
That's, that's a heat detector, not a smoke detector.
It's a heat detector?
That's a heat detector, so if that triggers.
Is he?
We got some serious heat. This will, the owl is the least of our concerns. Yeah.
Okay. So maybe not that close as that, because then the, the.
That's carrying up the heat for him.
Yeah, no, those will go off with that. It'd be, have to be pretty, I don't know what the temperature rating is on that.
Oh, it's pretty high, yeah.
Those are what you're gonna see in car garages and stuff like that, but that's definitely a heat detector.
Okay, I'm very sorry to deviate the topic, but let's go back to it. Thank you Travis.
Yep.
Let's go back to the.
Do you wanna fix the?
We're good. Oh, just put it to follow the whoever's speaking, please.
That's interesting.
Okay. So you were saying, so everybody's happy with what they're getting. We are going to do both phases at the same time and we were gonna check something else. I don't remember, but after, besides that, everything is good. We can vote for it.
If that's what you wanna do.
Why not?
Yeah.
Have a motion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve Entree's proposal for the computer upgrade plan to include phase one and phase two.
Give a second.
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufray, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Billie Zai, motion approved. We're getting computers.
Thank you.
And it's through a grant. Okay, next.
Partially through a grant.
Yes.
Yes, it's helping us. Discussion and possible vote on the first quarter FY twenty five and second quarter FY twenty five ambulance abatement. Anticipate a vote. Chief.
Good evening again. Adam LaVoy, Fire Chief. Uh, thank you for having me in tonight. Uh, these are pretty standard. We do these, uh, you know, four times a year each quarter. Uh, these are the write offs, uh, or abatements for, um, uh, ambulance fees that we can't collect due to insurance company policies and state laws and stuff. So we have to do these from time to time. Um, sometimes they can be bigger, sometimes they can be smaller, depending on how much our billing company bills. Uh, there's such thing as bad debt as well, which we will be having to write off in the near future for things that are just uncollected. This is specifically for insurance, insurances that we cannot collect by law. You know, there's a difference between that and others that, like, people that just don't pay or we can't find or anything. But legally, this is where we have to write off in abate for, to balance our books for insurances.
So had you budgeted, essentially covered this in your budget and now you weren't able to collect it?
No. So again, for, for, to make it as basic as possible, um, these are for, it all depends on what the person has for insurance. So if, say the person was Medicare or Medicaid or something, if we bill them, you know, just under two thousand dollars for an ambulance ride, by law, Medicare or Medicaid only has to pay, say, three hundred dollars of that. The rest of that has to be written off, right? Cause by law, we cannot collect anymore. We cannot balance bill that person because they're on Medicare or Medicaid. So this isn't unique to Warren. This is every ambulance service that's out there. So legally, we cannot collect any more money from that and we have to write that money off. That's how that works. So like private ambulance, uh, insurances like Blue Cross Blue Shield or Harvard Pilgrim, you know, et cetera, et cetera. They, we can balance bill the patients for that if the insurance doesn't pay. But certain mass health, Medicare, which a lot of our patients are on, we cannot balance bill them by law. So we have to abate that each time depending on, so we may collect, you know, you know, uh, you know, we may bill out a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of, you know, worth of stuff. But we make, we have to write off this much because we cannot collect that by law. It's just how it works, unfortunately. It's this, you know, I mean, if you look at where's books or, you know, whatever town it is, if they're twice as big as we are, they're writing off twice as much as we are. So it's all relative. It's not something that's unique to Warren, unfortunately. It's just the state law and how it works and the federal laws.
In other words, we don't, we don't have a discussion here. We just have to give you the okay.
I mean, it is, it, it, I understand. The numbers are the numbers, but you have to look at it as to how much we're billing, uh, you know, we, we are billing and how much it would cost us to run a private ambulance service or something like that. I mean, it is what it is. We collect, you know, we're starting to collect between, you know, four hundred thousand plus a year to, you know, towards the town that the town takes back with ambulance calls that we do. It doesn't come back to the department. It goes to the general fund. So, you know, these write offs are what we have to do to balance our books by law.
I don't know. Every quarter I don't get it, so. It's just seems like.
Legally can't charge them.
So it, it's so.
We, we gotta suck it up, buttercup, and just.
So, so if you look at, like, for, for, just to make it simple, if you look at one of those things and it's fifty thousand dollars, that could have been a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we billed for Medicare cause, costs, but we only collected a hundred thousand of it. We have to write off the other because we can't legally collect it. So if you do the math, the basic numbers, if two thousand dollars, we can only collect three hundred. Alright, that's seventeen hundred dollars that's left on the table and that's one call. So if we do fifty of those calls, it gets to that number, you know what I mean? So it's, I mean, we did far and away, we were fifteen percent more call volume than we did in two thousand twenty three last year. So our numbers are keep going through the roof. We hit, uh, twelve hundred plus calls this year. So, uh, over, uh, calendar year twenty four. So that was, I mean, we're doing five hundred more calls than we were doing, you know, five, six years ago. It's crazy. So, you know, unfortunately, those ambulance calls, we do roughly sixty to seventy ambulance calls every single month.
So I would like to know, one of the things I would like to know is that cor- correlates with the closing of Mary Lane. The increase of your calls.
Sure, more mileage.
So that, that number is going up and you can factor in saying, hey, there's gonna be, been an increase in our calls due to the closing of the, the hospital that was right down the street.
Certainly that's a factor. Certainly that's a factor. I think, I think a lot of it has to do with a lot of doctor's offices not being fully staffed and closed.
A lot of them won't take, a lot of them don't take new patients, so.
If you're sick.
There's a lot of, yeah, I mean, I, I know from, you know, we call our, you know, my son's doctor's office, nope, we don't have time to take them. We can't take them. So it's either take them to urgent care or take them to the emergency room. So we're seeing a huge increase in people calling the ambulance because they don't have other options, you know? So we're, you know, we're doing a, you know, a lot of mental health calls, you know, more than we've ever done before. We're doing a lot of welfare checks. So there's just a lot of things that, that were never quite part of the nine one one system before that now are. So that's just kinda where it is.
My question, do you think it would benefit the town if we can get a minute clinic in town?
Oh, yeah. I mean, they're, they're, people are going to those all the time. I mean, they, they, they do take some of the burden off of, um, you know, the.
Cause we might not need a hospital, but.
However, they do also add to call volumes of local ambulance services that, you know, as well. So it's a double edged sword because if somebody walks in there with something, you know, you know as well as I do, a doctor's not gonna take the liability on. If someone comes in and to a minute clinic and says, I have chest pain, they're not gonna treat that there. They're gonna call an ambulance and have them taken out, so.
Well, they're gonna call an ambulance anyways.
Well, it's, it's all relative. So I'm saying, yes, it can alleviate some of the congestion at the hospitals, but it can add to the call volume for the local service of the town it's in. Because they have, may, they're gonna call for an ambulance in some cases for that person if they're, they find something that they can't handle in house.
So you're afraid that other people from other towns may come here to use that minute clinic?
I, I'm just saying, we can't predict that they can actually treat that person at that minute clinic. And for their liability, they may turn around and not let the person walk out the door. They may call an ambulance for them and say, take them to a hospital instead because they're, they're better treated there. So, you know, it all depends. I mean, I'd have to look at, you know, towns like Wilbraham and Palmer that have these clinics in there and see how that runs. I mean, Palmer's is in the hospital, so, you know, but Wilbraham Ludlow has one, um, you know. I'd, I'd have to see how many calls, you know, the local service is, is kinda taking in.
Munson has one.
Comes in. So, I mean, that's certainly, if we ever, if we ever were to have one proposed for the town, I would immediately request some of the numbers from the other towns that have had them and see kinda what we could plan for our call volume being affected by them.
I think that would be interesting to know because the hospital closed about five years ago. And then your call volume dramatically went up.
Oh, that's a hundred percent true. I mean, it did. It did, and that's certainly a factor. I would say what affects us more is the long transport times, you know, the, the.
Well, that, that too.
Yeah, and, and, and being out of service for longer. That has been the real bottleneck for us in, in EMS locally here is, is we're all covering each other because it's taking the town so much longer to get back into service. That's second, we, what's happening now that we never saw, you know, smaller towns like ours, we do one ambulance call, you know? And we'd be, go out and come back and then they call again and we do another ambulance call. But now we're getting second and third calls at the same time. So, you know, there's many times where we're already tied up on one medical call and a second call for service comes in. So another town comes in, vice, same thing in Palmer, same things in Westbrookfield. So the other towns are covering those overages that, you know, we no longer have the one call at a time. It's multiple calls at a time, you know, and that's the change.
How many of those calls would you say are because people don't feel well? I'm not feeling well. I can't make it to the hospital. I need an ambulance to bring me.
Yeah, a, a, a lot of them, um, you know, like I said, uh, you know, one of the biggest changes we've seen is, is a lot of the mental health calls. You know, those are, those are huge. They're a huge percentage of, of, of what we do that, you know, has some sort of mental health component in there. So that has changed things, cause that was never really part of an, of, you know, a nine one one system too. So, you know, that has added to, certainly added to the call volume as well. But the mutual aid between the towns has definitely increased a lot. So that has changed things a lot. We're going to, you know, to other towns. They're coming here more often than we ever have before. That's another big change.
So would it be good to regionalize an ambulance service?
There's been talk about looking at things like that. There's a lot that goes into that because, you know, a state, a state. There's been talk about looking at things like that, there's a lot that goes into that, because, you know, a state, a state, an ambulance license is very hard to come by. And if you lose it, you're probably not gonna get it back. So, you know, we've had an ambulance license for years, ironically, we just had our, our two year, every two years, uh, the Office of Emergency Medical Services comes in and re-licens us. We just had our inspection this Wednesday, um, and I'm happy to say that we should expect our new license to be coming in so shortly. So the inspection, inspection went well, uh, but you give that up, you're probably never gonna get it back. And you're gonna be in a position where you're gonna have to pay a private company to come in and do that, and that's.
Oh, so if we went to regionalization and then got out of it at some point?
Yeah, so I, I would suspect that their regionalization to some extent in the, in, in, in kind of streamlining mutual aid, you know, and, and, and stuff. And that's gonna be where you're, you're gonna start to see this, you know? I don't anticipate seeing in this area of the, of the country, you know, county type stuff, like they do out west and down south. I don't think that's coming anytime soon, but you may see some partnerships between different communities. Hey, you supply us, you, you help us out these days, we'll help you out these days, you know, we'll, you know, I think you're gonna see more cooperation between the towns, and we've had those discussions, you know? How can we make our service, both of our services more efficient and help each other out, you know? And I think those are what you're gonna see, uh, sooner than later, those types of things.
And I'm assuming a second ambulance is not an economical decision.
Well, I mean, there are certainly times that we could get a, a second ambulance on the road. The problem is, again, you know, staffing is so tough for everybody right now, you know? Do you, you know, do you keep, you know, once we turn over our other ambulance, do we keep it as a spare? Well, number one, we really don't have room for it, you know, because we have all the other trucks and everything like that. So without a, you know, a state, a bay to put it in, you can't do it. Uh, number two, it costs money to, to staff it, obviously, you know? It, it's a discussion that we, you know, could we support it? Yeah, we probably could, would it go out the door every single time? No, probably not, cause we have bare minimum staffing as it is to get one truck out the door. So, you know, there are times that certainly we could staff it, but, you know, it's, it's getting harder to do, for the EMTs to do on-call shifts. So there's a lot of different factors that are, that are in there. So, you know, right now, I've seen a lot of services in the Commonwealth, you know, really going through a tough time. It's not an easy time to be in the ambulance business at the moment, uh, because of this. We had, right now, there's a huge Medicare study and, and, and Jim was, uh, you know, helped me out on this recently. Uh, we got selected to do a Medicare audit, okay? And not because we did anything wrong, but this is what, uh, there was like four phases to this. And across the country, all ambulance services needed, were required to do, uh, participate in this audit. And this audit was very exhausting and, and, oh, I had to gather information from Mr. Ferrera. I had to work, you know, very much with Jackie and with, with Dawn, uh, to get numbers. This, they wanted everything, they wanted your revenue, they wanted the call volume, they wanted how much you pay in Band-Aids and this and that and everything. And the whole reason for this, their, their reasoning for this was that they were assessing what they were paying. So the hope is, the hope is that Medicare, Medicaid, mass health organizations like this will start paying us more and we won't have to write off all this, because they're trying to capture the true numbers of what we're spending. How much is it costing you to run that ambulance? What did they, they wanted, you know, gas mileage, you know, what, how much gas you putting into the thing? How many, how much you paying the EMTs? Are they coming, you know, they, every little rock they wanted on turn to capture the most accurate numbers they could so that they could go to the government and say, hey, listen, we're underpaying these people. You know, this is, this is crazy, we need to be paying them, you know, whether it goes from three hundred to six hundred or something, but that would certainly help with this. So, you know, because unfortunately, it's a very antiquated equation and it really needs to be adjusted. And that's what they're supposedly working on right now. And that audit took me months to go through. I mean, literally, I think it was about twenty-eight hours of man-hours to gather all the numbers that they did between all of our offices here in town to, to accurately, you know, portray those numbers that they wanted. So hopefully that will help, but this is gonna be something, I know the numbers are daunting, but again, it, it makes sense if you think about it. It makes sense because of the state laws, if you crunch the numbers and the amount of calls we do, it's a big number, but it's based on a lot of calls, so.
Yeah, I just, the, the fact that they're paying so little, I guess.
Oh, it's, I, I agree, and, and, and again, this study was just done. So I'm hoping that within a year from now, when they finalize everything, that they will come out and say, alright, we've decided we're gonna give the towns this much when they transport a Medicare, Medicaid person and stuff. So, you know, it's kinda, we're, we're all waiting in the wings for this, because every fire chief that runs an ambulance would tell you the same thing, that this is ridiculous, that we get paid this amount when, you know, I mean, because especially like a town like Warren, our demographic is, there's a lot of, you know, people that are on, you know, Medicaid, ma, you know, mass health, Medicare and stuff. It's not, it's not necessarily common to have a top-tier insurance like, you know, Harvard Pilgrim or something like that. We, you know, those are great, cause we capture more money, you know, but it is what it is, we have to, we have to do that by state law.
So I'm gonna think out of the box here for a second, cause I think it would help if we have somebody local, people that have just a cold can go to, to help with your call numbers, because I would rather you go into a heart attack in saving somebody than transporting somebody because they gotta cough and they can't make it to the hospital. It, cause you're, our town praises you guys and you guys are top-notch. And if anybody is gonna respond to a heart attack, I want it to be our guys responding to a heart attack, cause you guys are, are top-tier when it comes to that stuff. I don't want somebody else doing it.
Certainly, you know, dispersing, you know, the needs of healthcare is, is a priority. I mean, having people go to appropriate facilities is obviously what we would encourage and we would want people to do that. And we want people to know, I mean, there's been many people, you know, uh, guidances that have been put out there on social media and stuff that if you have this, this and this symptom, this is really appropriate for a Minute Clinic. If you have this, this and this, this is a nine-one-one call, you know? So, you know, I just think there's a whole lack of, of, you know, of, you know, some misunderstanding and, and, and a lot of it has to do with the people's personal lives. They may not have a car, they may not have a, you know, the, the, the needs to get to the hospital. So there's a lot of factors, they could be, you know, they could be elderly and not have, you know, transportation. So there's a, there's a lot of factors in there. I mean, we can, we cannot pick and choose the calls that we go on, if someone calls nine-one-one, we go. You know, that is, that's, you know, what we have to do by law and everything. But this is happening so much now to all the communities, you know?
What is that, is it total for the past three months? So we're looking at approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in three months.
That's a lot of money.
We had to forgive. Is there any way we could try to get a clinic to move into town or hospital? And by incentivizing them to do that, not a hospital, but a clinic or maybe a doctor's office, and by incentivizing that, say, you don't pay town taxes. As long as you operate in our town, we waive the taxes, because they're providing a service for our town and they're actually saving us money, because the amount of property taxes we'd get from them would be.
Yeah.
Five, six thousand dollars, but yet they'd be saving us a hundred and eighty, well, not that much.
Yeah.
They'd probably be saving us like.
A third of that.
Out of that, probably seventy thousand dollars. That just paid for the taxes and then some. And then we have local services.
Well, the other side to this too is that, you know, unfortunately ambulance bills are not like, you know, um, excise tax or anything like that. So we can't attach that stuff to people's license renewals and stuff like that. So if you, it's very hard to get blood from stone sometimes.
Well, we're not looking at debt, we're just looking at.
No, no, I, no, I understand, I'm just saying that that is also a factor in your bad debt write-off, because if you can't literally get people to, if they can't pay, you know, they're struggling to pay for rent and stuff, they're not gonna pay an ambulance bill. I mean, it is what it is, they're still gonna call, but they're not gonna pay, so.
I'm proposing is not using the ambulance.
No, no, I get, I understand what you're saying.
Because if we can do, e- even if we did the Minute Clinic or whatever, even if we sat there and said, okay, we're gonna have, um, what's the bus that services the town?
Well, there's the PVTA and the WRTA.
Oh, the Quabog Connector.
The Quabog Connector. If you have, if you have to go see the, the doctor, the Quabog Connector will bring you to the doctor.
And it, yeah, that.
And then bring you from there back home, and then you don't have to worry about it. You don't have to call an ambulance, because you have the flu. Maybe go see the, your doctor, which is in town now, or the clinic that's in town, and then we're not getting dinged, what, three thousand dollars or two thousand dollars? And only three of it, three hundred of it is getting paid, so we gotta forgive seventeen hundred dollars for that one call to take them to the emergency room and then it's tying you guys up for an hour? Going out of town, back into town, and then waiting there too?
Hour and a half, yeah, but time to get back in service and they take the patient.
So I, I believe definitely that's a, a bullet point to include in our agendas to talk about it, I think it's very interesting.
Also, put it in the master plan too.
Yeah, yes, and, and your, I, in your case, I, I can see the struggle, I see there's a little hope in the future. But for now, we, we should, we should just vote for these guys.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I'll make a motion, alright, I'll make a motion to approve the first quarter FY twenty-five, um, ambulance abatement. And we gotta do them individually, right?
Uh, for first quarter and second quarter, yeah.
And.
Well, there's two of them here.
Okay, let me rephrase that, because the way it's saying, it's like almost two. I'll make a motion to approve the first quarter FY twenty-five abatement and second quarter two, FY twenty-five abatement for the ambulance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufray, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all the knowledge, and your learning.
I, I know it's confusing, but I mean, like I said, Warren is no different than any other town. This is what, standard write-offs that we are required to do by law.
So Chief.
Yes.
For, for our reference, is there a chance you can reach out to the towns that have a Minute Clinic? And see if their call volume went up because of the Minute Clinic or went down?
Sure, yeah, I can do that preparation, I mean, that's, that's what, that's the first thing I would do if I ever knew there was one proposed here. I, I would venture to guess that the call volume probably went up. I mean, I, I, I think.
If you could find that out, so we can know.
That, you know, you have a medical entity that now came into town and there's gonna be transports out of it, it's a, it's a no-brainer. I, so I would say that it, it probably went up, you know, but I would certainly crunch some numbers. Thank you.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mister Chairman, um, I, I do also wanna let the board know that on the nineteenth of this month, the Ware Business Association, um, group that meets, um, is gonna be meeting on Hannah's Unmaine. And the featured speaker is the new president of Bay State Medical Center, uh, Mr. Banco, I believe his name is. And so he's gonna be coming down to talk about Mary Lane and what, you know, potential proposals they're, they may or may not bring to that site. I think it's critically important, I'll be attending that, um, to let them know that we have a desert here for healthcare services for our residents and that we need to provide, you know, some, some better, um, coverage for our residents. So, you know, that, they will be having that discussion, I think that's gonna be an important discussion. I know Ware is trying to steer that ship, because they wanna see, you know, something go in Mary Lane. And they, they talked about a dock in the box or a Minute Clinic or something to that nature. Those dock in the boxes and Minute Clinics, okay, are all predicated on car counts that come into your town. And whether or not they're going to potentially get a return on their investment for having that dock in the box. So I'd love to see one here, maybe a little challenge, but maybe we can get creative with Bay State Medical Center and, and partner with Ware and some type of initiative where they can bring something to, a little bit closer to home for everybody.
Alright, it'd be great to see something go into Mary Lane, you know, or use that space for something like that, that would help us a lot. I think what the problem is, is everybody just, they go all the way out to, you know, what's the hospital again?
Wing?
Wing.
Or Harrington?
That's, that's a thirty-minute drive for, for a lot of residents. And then if you go to the emergency room, it's so overcrowded in that emergency room that you can be sitting there for hours, you know, just waiting. And if you have something simple, your doctor doesn't wanna see you, because now they got this thing like, well, if you have COVID, take a COVID test before you come see me. Well, I'm coming to see you because I might have COVID, but they don't want you in the office if you have it. So there, there's all kinds of issues with that, it'd be nice to have something local, you know? And that would, even if it's in, within the area, to be able to service some of this, that'd be good.
So there was an article in the Ware River News, right? The last Ware River News about Bay State maybe establishing something. But they weren't talking about using the Mary Lane site. There was two other, there was a school site they were thinking and something else, and I can't remember.
I thought the school was a nursing home now, isn't it?
Well, it must have been something else that isn't used in Ware. I can't remember, but.
Adam, if you wanted to come to the, the, you know, you're more than welcome to.
On the nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Okay, I can follow up with you.
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
It'd be great.
So I mean, Ware, if you look at the town of Ware, they got hit with kind of a double whammy, cause not only did they lose the hospital right in their backyard in town, but then they had Cedar Brook Village.
Yeah.
Built right next door, and Cedar Brook Village was kinda sold on the fact that you have senior living with a hospital right next door. And then they shut it down. So I hear Ware going there sometimes two, three times a day. And they have policies, that they have a no-touch policy over there, if a resident falls, they do not pick them up. They call nine-one-one and even, and they have to come over. So it's almost like having a nursing home to some extent i- in their backyard. So not only did they lose the local hospital, their call volume went to the roof and they're required to send people over there just to get a refusal and help somebody and then get, and then come back into service. So a lot of what we do, we never did before. And that's, I mean, we go to Cedar Brook Village, you know, i- if Ware's not available, we go over there to, to help out. And that's part of the mutual aid system, it is what it is, but that came in the same time Mary Lane was going out and that was a huge backbreaker for Ware.
Yeah.
Okay, unfortunately, that's the way it is. Discussion and review fiscal year twenty-two-six selection's budget request.
Some of these items, Mister Chairman, are, are still very fluid. I've been coordinating with Karen on, um, you know, technology, they're gonna get with Entrez, um, for, for next year. We are at a month-to-month, we're not on a contract, we are month-to-month with them. So I, I do have to sit down with them. The, the liability insurance as well as workers' comp, um, we haven't gotten any final numbers on that, um.
This, so bottom line selection total says dollars point two eight, is it twenty-eight percent or point two eight percent?
Twenty-eight tenths.
No, it's, I don't know, I don't know why it did that, I fixed that and then it flipped back.
So do you know what it really is? Cause I hope that's not twenty-eight percent.
No, it's like two point eight, I think.
Okay.
But I think it's more than that, so I don't know.
I think it's gotta be more than two point eight.
I think it's eight point two.
The first page is thirteen, over thirteen percent. So there's still some, there's still some fluid numbers here. We're gonna have some, uh, uh, further discussion on this. Obviously now that budgets are delayed another week or so, um, you know, we have some time.
So our streetlight budget went down quite a bit, huh?
For maintenance.
For maintenance, um, you know.
And they all work, they great.
Oh, I love this company.
We haven't had any issues with streetlights, we used to talk about that all the time.
The new, the new, uh, Pine Ridge has been very good, uh, and we, and they, you know, as soon as I get word that there's a street light out, we, you know, they get right on it and, you know, we're, we're averaging about, you know, uh, you know, eight or nine thousand dollars, um, you know?
Were streetlight, oh, I see.
Maintenance, streetlight maintenance.
Um, why did the copier lease go to five thousand?
I think that's just a number that's there right now, cause we're gonna be talking about it in, in the future. We're gonna be talking about it at next week's meeting. I gotta get some additional money, uh, I mean, some additional, uh, research on that. It's just a, a number to plug in for now.
And so one of our tower leases is going up, Hampton?
Yeah.
Thirty percent?
Yep.
Is that the same one that wanted to renegotiate?
Correct.
Ah, yeah, okay. Holy moly.
Well, hopefully they eventually go in front of the planning board for some sort of adjustment and we can get it worked into their conditions.
Yeah.
That would save the town a lot, cause I believe we have the conditions now, any new towers that go in, public safety gets a free spot.
Yes, that's the way it is.
So.
Where do we have that?
But these are old towers.
So where do we have that?
We had that, we made that adjustment a while ago when we discussed this.
Not in the zoning bylaws?
No, it's a condition.
Oh, is it, oh, to add the, okay.
Yeah.
I got it, yep. So the admin assistant is going up fourteen percent?
Well, there's a reason for that.
No, I don't, you know, no, I, I think that's an inaccurate number.
Well, that's the, that's my pay, but because I'm retiring, I had to put in my holiday pay and my last week from what I would make, but I didn't know what to put in because I didn't know what you guys were gonna hire. So I just used what I would be making, which is way more than what you're gonna hire somebody at. So it's a very inflated.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have some adjust, you know, obviously we have to compensate for vacation time and, and holiday time that Karen would have, you know, entitled to, that we have to put in there. The, the salary aspect of, of a potential new hire would be adjusted.
Okay.
Yeah.
And thank you for changing the, the item, the line for cheer instead of the softball. You did that?
I did.
Yep.
That's what you were asking.
Softball and add a cheer.
Instead of softball, we had, we added cheer because cheer was, cheer and football are kinda together and.
Oh, yeah, they, they had to divide the money and we have no softball team. So we kept on getting the money.
Some of these teams don't come for the money.
No.
I know.
And that's the thing, we need to look at that because like, if baseball's not gonna get the money and basketball's not gonna get the money.
Baseball usually gets the money.
Baseball, soccer is the hard one.
Soccer doesn't and softball didn't.
Soccer, that one was like two years ago, maybe?
But we don't even have a softball team, so it's not even an option.
Yeah, so.
So we made it cheer.
I made this suggestion that, you know, have, let the cheers have it because I think they do a lot, they do go to a lot of places. They put our, our name out there a lot, so I think it was fair for them not to share.
For what? For uniforms, supplies, or?
They use it for.
Whatever they use it, they have to give us the receipts.
They, they bring a receipt, you know.
But it's for Warren children only. So if you have a combined, like baseball, we won't pay for uniforms for Westbrookville. We will only pay uniforms for Warren.
Yeah, okay.
Hmm, no.
Yes, we can only pay for our residents.
On, on the baseball, that's the case.
Yeah, but they, they, but they bring, they bring a invoice, for example.
Right.
For soccer balls.
Right.
They both use them.
Yeah.
That's different.
That's different. Well, I'm talking just the uniforms.
But we don't give this for uniforms.
We have.
We have?
They can use that money for whatever they need for that team. They can use it to purchase whatever they want to support that team. But it cannot go to support, like, another town residence that only supports our town's residents. So if they're gonna buy uniforms, they can buy uniforms for Warren residents, okay? But typically what they do is they do buy new mats, they do things that are generalized.
Yeah.
Yeah, they buy generalized items because I know with cheer, they do a lot of acrobatics. And they buy, you know, special mats to, to help them flip, do backflips and stuff safely. So they use that for that stuff. And then there's other things that they get them, you know.
Just make sure that that's what it goes out on for them to know.
Thank you.
They all know. Cause they all have both towns together. Soccer was the only one, few years back, who was only Warren.
Now it's only Westbrookfield.
That's how it sounds. Even though, even though all the coaches are from Warren.
Yeah, but they only play in Westbrookfield.
Yeah, I know.
They don't come to Warren. Even though we have that nice soccer field there and that ability for them to do, they, they don't go back and forth.
Yeah.
They crowd Westbrookfield instead.
Yeah, I remember they were looking for somebody last year and they mentioned it. That it had to be from Westbrook, from, from Westbrookfield and they, somebody asked why and they said, oh, that's because everybody else is from Warren, so we need to balance it. But I don't know. Those, this is not for discussion at this time.
So we're tabling this again?
What's that?
We're tabling this again.
Yeah, we're tabling.
Well, there's no vote.
There's no vote.
So we're just reviewing.
So we can just keep moving.
Yeah, you still get to plug numbers anyway, so.
So we move on?
Yep.
Yep. Discussion with possible vote to reappoint Madeline Witazek. 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 To the position.
Come on, we're Polish.
No, 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 no. If I read it in English, it doesn't come out. If I read it in Spanish, it does. It just doesn't make sense. Anyway. To the position of assistant town accountant for a three-year term, anticipated vote.
Did we just said something about this last week?
Yes, we did.
Couldn't happen?
Why are we, um, why are we voting for her to be in assistant accountant position? Because we have an accountant? Isn't the accountant supposed to be doing that job now?
So, um, to preface briefly on this, um, in twenty-twenty-one, during that budget season, when I checked with the town clerk, the position was put into the budget and was voted on at town meeting and was funded. So since that time, the position has stayed, um, in, within the budget and has been funded. And is currently funded, um, right now. Although there's been no money expended from that line. The five thousand dollars that has been budgeted for, for the last four years has remained the same. I wasn't here in twenty-twenty-one when the position was originally created. But it's my understanding that the position is for, um, you know, if the town accountant is ill and is out, if the town accountant is on vacation and payroll needs to be done and, or vendor warrant needs to be put out, that is what the position is about. I know that this particular, yes, we do have a newer town accountant. In this particular close of the budget season, Madeline helped out the, um, the new town accountant to close this year because the current town accountant wasn't as familiar with closing, you know, as to other functions within the office. So, um, the position exists. It is currently, um, you know, occupied by Madeline. Her, um, appointment expired in October of last year. And so the board needs to make a determination as to what they wanna do.
I think it's good to have somebody there just in case she goes on vacation, she gets sick. We need somebody to fill in.
I think that, I think that's a good idea too, when you explain it that way. I just didn't want her turning around and, um, doing what the accountant should be doing. Cause we hired an accountant and the accountant needs to be doing her job and, you know, bringing in, you know, Madeline to help augment stuff. She's supposed to be doing her job and working with that, but as a backup, we need to, I agree, we need to have a backup. Cause that's one of those positions, if we lose our town accountant, we're in a financial problem here. So I, I'm, I'm good with it then.
You're good?
Yep.
You're good? I'm good? Let's make a motion.
Alright, I'll make a motion to reappoint Madeline Witazek to the position of assistant town accountant for a three-year term.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, motion approved.
You're not gonna meet yet eight o'clock timeframe.
No. Who, who's?
We said eight, between eight and eight-thirty.
There's no way they're gonna get through the rest of this in, in half an hour.
I just bet five dollars that was, would, we're gonna have less than one inch of snow.
That was a good bet.
Moving on?
Yeah, the chairs start slopping up, signing the top.
It doesn't matter where it is. I'm not above you guys.
No.
I'm just in the middle over here.
Takes up three lines.
Hey, it works.
Discussion with a possible vote to enter into a contract with Weston and Sampson for engineering services related to the design of Hillside Avenue, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the board. Before you this evening is for consideration is a contract between the town and Weston and Sampson to provide engineering services, professional services for the Hillside Avenue Improvement Project. That is part of the town's CDBG, um, project. It is funded through CDBG. The contract before you is for thirty-one thousand dollars and that is for design and engineering services for Hillside Avenue. And that's out of the CDBG twenty-two, twenty-three funds.
So no cost to the town?
Correct.
I'm good with it.
Yep, let's do it.
Let's make a motion.
Alright, I'll make a motion to enter into a contract with Weston and Sampson for engineering services related to the design of Hillside Avenue.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, motion approved. Next review and possible vote on two change orders, number three, related to the School Street Improvement Project Phase Two and Otis Street Improvement Projects, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the board. Before you this evening is two change orders. One for the School Street, uh, uh, project, uh, as well as one for the Otis Street Improvement Project. Both, uh, projects have come under budget. And these are actually a decrease in, in, in pricing. So it will, uh, it will net a, a negative on the School Street side, eight thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and, and twelve cents of savings. And then on the Otis Street side, it will net a savings of approximately fourteen thousand two hundred and five dollars. On the first one is for, um, we did sidewalk sealant and there was some additional costs associated with that of three thousand twenty dollars. But we had, uh, some, um, savings in, in, in other accounts. So it, it nets out to an eight thousand or one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twelve cents net positive for the town as a credit. And then fourteen thousand two hundred and five dollars for the Otis Street side. And, you know, again, we did sidewalk sealant for, for that, which was seven hundred and eighty dollars, which brought us down to a, a balance of, um, of a, a negative or a credit of fourteen thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars.
So we have to vote to accept the fact that they went under budget?
They're change orders. They're change orders. So yeah, yeah. So if, if we go above or below.
I think this one's a no-brainer though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Plus we keep this money, right? And we can reprogram it?
The, yeah, I mean, there's a potential for CMRPC to come in to, to reprogram funds. But reprogramming funds, as you know, is a time-sensitive thing. So these things would have to be done relatively quickly for identifying projects.
So let's hurry up and make a motion.
What are you waiting for?
I'll make a motion to, um, wait a second. I'll make a motion to approve the change order number three related to School Street Improvement Project Phase Two and Otis Street Improvement Project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, motion approved.
Thank you.
Alright, so you are the owner on the bottom of both of those.
You bought those streets.
Looks like Monopoly. Can put some hotels on there now.
That clinic.
So Jim's up next, you wanna let him go?
Um, I would like to request a five-minute break for a run to the boys' room. If it's okay with everyone?
Sure.
I thought we were getting buckets.
No, that comes with the new desk.
That's the new desk? You have little buckets?
They'll have like a little thing.
A trap.
They get the trough there?
See what happens when a man is like going that long?
Joe probably remembers the days when having troughs along the bar, right?
No comment for you all. I couldn't find my nudes. Here they are.
Oh my god.
When you put mittens on, it's not that cold in here. It's hot.
Are you kidding me? My feet are probably purple. My fingers are red, are pink wide.
We need a sponsor. We could like run an ad right now.
Uh, this is for the month of Jan- of January. It is, um, on, on the web as well. But our tax collections for the month of January was one million eight hundred ninety-one thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Of that, real estate was one million five hundred thirty-four thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and ten cents. Personal property was at, collections were at two hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy dollars and thirteen cents. Motor vehicle excise tax was at six thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Interest and fees, seven thousand fifty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Sewer liens, eighty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and four cents. Registry clears, one thousand one hundred four, uh, forty dollars. Mobile home parks, three hundred forty-eight dollars. Municipal lien fees, three hundred dollars. And water liens, twelve thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. For a total collection of one million eight hundred ninety-one thousand six hundred twenty-eight thousand fifty-eight cents. Throughout the month of.
Can I ask a question with that?
Yes, sir.
Why are we getting water liens when we don't have water departments?
We collect. We collect for them. We, we do that service. We collect those liens.
Why are we collecting for them?
That is a, a, a relationship that the town has had with the tax, with.
Then why aren't we getting free water?
We provide that service.
Yeah, we need to look into that, because if we're doing them a favor and we're doing the work for them, I expect something in return.
Well, that's something that...
They will be here next week.
For the hydrants?
The Warren Water District. I haven't heard from West Warren, but the Warren Water District will be here.
What do you guys think about that? Why are we doing this service?
It's not often that they do collect, but maybe once or twice a year.
Can I come in?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Carrie, tax collector. Sorry, I'm outside traveling, but I'm just listening to the media. What we collect for the water district is similar to what we collect for the sewer department, which is past due bills. So bills that get passed due by mass state law can be attached to real estate taxes, and they're thereby treated the same as real estate taxes where you can put a property in tax title for overdue amounts for sewer and water. So this stems back to well before I started working here in 2010, but we're not collecting their typical water bills. This is only some bills that get lien that are well past due.
Right, but they're private. They're not a town department, where the water department is a town department.
Sewer.
The sewer department. Sewer department's a town department, where the water department's a private entity. They're completely separate.
Well, yes, and you can take that up. I'm just explaining the situation, like, we're not collecting their day-to-day water stuff. It's only the stuff that's well past due, and it's my understanding that it's so that they have the ability, the town has the ability to take a property as a tax title for unpaid water or sewer bills, so they don't stay out there for years and years. However you want to arrange that with the water department, that's fine. I was just stepping in by way of the...
Yeah, we need to make it a... We should put the water department on that, because that's not right.
So Carrie, could they attach the lien themselves?
Anybody?
No, I'm a tax collector. I'm not a water department. So they might be able to... I'm sorry, what's happening?
Contract is to do to people's property. Time. If they don't get paid for a contract, they can put a lien on the property. So anybody can put a lien on somebody's property.
Then I would just have that do it.
The only thing I would say that is, if it's a real estate tax lien, it's a first priority lien, as opposed to other liens that come into my mind.
But my thing... If we're doing it, sorry, if we're doing it, let's not do it for free anymore. You know, the free stuff is done with, you know, we have to, Carrie is getting paid by the town to collect their liens.
Well, I don't think she's collecting them. She's just filing a lien or however.
She's doing work for them.
Well, yeah.
On their behalf.
Yeah.
And we're not getting reimbursed.
The lien, the liens actually come onto the tax code through the assessor's department and the sewer department. The water department, yeah, send lists of liens every year before the actual tax commitment to the assessor's department, where they assess those liens as part of the tax bill, the third quarter tax bill.
So can we address that? To address it next, next week, when the water department's here, so we can address this with them, because maybe they can adjust what we're paying for a water bill, because our water bill's pretty high, or...
Or just have them take it, just let them do it themselves.
Yeah.
You know?
Or take it off, and that's money that we're not collecting in overburdened somebody else, one of our employees.
Right, yeah.
For a private entity.
Yeah.
Yeah, just put it on the agenda. Let's keep going.
Okay, so also the financial departments were very busy the month of January. Treasurer's office were very busy with getting out W-2s. Employees started receiving their W-2s on the fifteenth of January. We have also, I met with the finance team to discuss the budget process and addressing the auditor's comments in his management letter. One of the things that was, that came about at the MMA, and we had an opportunity, myself and Selectman Iaker, and an opportunity to talk to Tony Raveli, who is our auditor, who is going to be coming in to do our audit, probably sometime in March or April, hopefully closer to April. Give us a little more time. I'm preparing a letter to be drafted to Mr. Raveli and his associates addressing, in his management letter last year, some of the highlighted items that he wanted us to see accomplished this year, and I want to give him an update on the progress that we have made on those items. So before he even starts the audit, I can hand him a letter saying, this is what we did, this is how we're, what we're making progress on, this is what we've achieved, so that he has it before the audit even starts. I think that's important to signal to the auditors that we take whatever their recommendations or comments very seriously. So that's what I'm preparing to do, and we're working with the financial departments to address those concerns, and that was part of that meeting that I had in January before the MMA with the finance team, to make sure that we address those things. I know Adam is working on some things with some ambulance abatements, so those are definitely some things that need to be addressed before the next audit starts. Unfortunately, in the financial department, we did lose our clerk in the assessor's office. Resignation was submitted, Gary Fitzgerald, on January twenty-eighth, so we will be posting for that. I do want to work with the remaining board of assessors as to a timeline and when they would potentially like to start to receive a clerk in there because of the fact that, you know, they would probably more than likely be involved in training of that person. We have, we had a full department head meeting the beginning of January, first one in January, to talk about risk management and to talk about things that have been happening within various departments. Continuing to participate in teacher negotiations at Quabog. We interviewed and recommended a candidate to hire as our operating mechanic for our sewer department. That person, Mr. Jeffrey Clark, is going to be starting on Monday. Knock on the wood. And...
And the sewer department is going to be fully staffed again?
No, there's still one vacancy. There's still one vacancy. And the senior center kitchen project is ninety percent completed. We're waiting on some custom side tables, which I mentioned to the board. Final inspections for the project. We're waiting on the plumber and the electrician, electrical inspector, to do their final inspections and close out the permits. Kitchen is operational. Senior Center is open, and we're going to be moving very soon to the bulkhead, weatherization, heating pumps, the back door, as well as the loading dock area improvements over there. So we're continuing to move forward through that building. In conjunction with all of that, next week is my goal to get out an RFP for the roof, so we can start the roof in April or May.
Thank you.
One of the recommendations for CDAC that I had a conversation with John O'Leary about, with some of this extra community block grant money that's available. We know that the senior center is eligible because it's where it's located, and we've done past projects there, so we already know that it qualifies for CDBG funding. Another future project that could be of help for us is to have the property properly surveyed, as well as to put up a fence on one side of the property where there's no fence. But we need a proper survey done and then a proper, you know, fence put in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Want to stop over at the senior center here soon and check out the new work. Is Sharon good with it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you, sir, for the report. Any questions? Will we move?
No.
Next, discussion and appointments of the following for election workers.
We have to read all?
Yes.
Karen M. Wilks, Linda Cunningham, Kathleen Vanas, Phyllis A. Dolina, Virginia Fleming, Karen Kelly Gary, Tracy S. Mazur, Agnes E. Seblak, James M. Stockley, Leona A. Roble, Sylvia Cummings, Mary Ann Potruski, Patricia Morrison, Kathy M. Duncan, Cheryl E. Cagnon, Barbara B. Larkin, Donna L. Pina, Carol Sanders Salisbury, Kian Siskiewicz, Linda L. Roble.
I'll make a motion to appoint the following election workers until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, as said by the chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufray, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved. Discussion and appoint Dimitra Stefanos to be cable advisory for a three-year term. Do we need Travis down?
Travis!
He's coming.
Here he comes.
Sorry, it's only two of us tonight. Travis Baker, chairman cable advisory. So Dimitra's been with us for the last year. We usually appoint one-year terms, and all goes well, then we do three-year terms. So her year is up, and she still wants to keep going, so...
Okay, awesome.
Has she been going well?
Yeah, yep. She's been a big help.
Good. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Dimitra Stefano to the cable advisory committee for a three-year term.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufray, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
So chief.
Discussion and appoint
You're up.
Ostakio Rodriguez and Patrick Gillespie as a police officer for a three-year term.
So it's the same thing, first-year term is one year, and that's three years after that. So they're, this is their year.
Now they both working out?
Yeah.
Are they good?
Yep. Very good.
Do you have no reservations?
Nope.
So I'll make a motion to reappoint Esquerra...
Let Derek do it.
Yeah.
He's good at this one, I think.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Ostakio Rodriguez.
Ostakio Rodriguez.
That rolling R thing, you have to do that.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Ostakio Rodriguez as a police officer for a three-year term, and Patrick Gillespie as a police officer for a three-year term.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufray, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
Mr. Chairman, just, I just want to remind everybody that because there's new appointments, they still have to get sworn in at the town clerk's office, so please, department heads, make sure your people get sworn in at the town clerk.
See, that was one name against like how many? Twenty?
Do we have to sign for all these people?
No.
Oh, you don't? Okay, thank God.
No, because it was brought forth from the town clerk.
Okay.
It wasn't us. According to the town clerk.
We have to acknowledge the resignation of Assessor's Clerk Gary Fitzgerald.
I just wanted to notify the board that there's a vacancy there.
Okay.
Do they look in?
Well, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work with the remaining assessors to see when they want to post. I think it's important that we work with the department, because they're going to be in charge of, you know, training and getting this person familiar with the office, so I want to know when's a good time to start looking for somebody so that they can have the time to vote somebody, you know, to do that.
Okay, sounds good. Next, we have warrants and bills.
I'll make a motion to pay the following warrant. Accounts payable for one million two hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufray, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Warrant approved.
I'll make a motion to pay the following bills. WB Mason for a total amount of fifty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. C2MA Adams for a total amount of nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. Verizon for twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. Hamden Communications for fifteen hundred dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufray, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Bills approved. Now, there's no minutes to prove?
And we already did the town administrator report, right?
I got a weekly report.
There's more stuff in there.
Are you kidding me?
No, go ahead, mister.
There's stuff in your binder, too.
So... So I just want to let the board know that we have a potential new restaurant coming into town. Going to be potentially opening very soon, Tropical Vibes in West Warren.
Yeah.
Okay. That restaurant is, was a restaurant in the past. We're hopeful that they will finish their inspections and everything will, you know, sail through and that there's a, you know, that we have something new in town. I do also want to bring to the board's attention that I did receive an email from a gentleman, and I attached his, his plan summary in your packets. It's Cozy Oak Furniture. He's a veteran from, I thought he was from Illinois, and he has been in the furniture business and logistics for quite some time. He has reached out to me, actually during the MMA conference, I received an email from him saying that he is interested in making furniture there and having, providing jobs for veterans, and he's interested in purchasing the mill, and he wants to showcase his proposal to the board at some point, but he wanted me to distribute this packet of information to the board to review and look at, and he's seriously considering.
So he's looking at purchasing the entire mill? Because they're selling it as one. They're not selling it in pieces.
Wow, this is...
Can I just go back to Tropical Vibes? They will be coming before the board for a liquor license in two, on the twenty-seventh.
A liquor license? I think beer and wine, yeah, right?
Well, they would like, they want a full liquor license, but mostly beer and wine. It's a restaurant we have and have available.
Okay.
Yeah, they should. It would have helped Picosa.
So this, this company, or potential company, you know, they're looking to create a workforce where, where they would, you know, hire veterans and craftsmen for making furniture, and, you know, this gentleman, like I said, has been in quite a bit of... furniture, uh, adventures, um, in the past. Um, and, you know, he's wanted to, um, put together this proposal and, uh, and show it to the board initially and, um, Carl, um, was the gentleman's name, and he had some, um, you know, positive things to say about, uh, uh, about the town and his interest was, uh, to potentially, uh, purchase the, uh, the mill.
Interesting.
He's gonna do a weekly TV series about the product, project.
Well, it's gonna be veteran-based, right?
You're right.
Yeah.
TV series?
Wow, I mean, this is.
I'd love to meet the guy.
This is awesome.
Yeah, maybe we could get him on a, a future Zoom call. I, I know he's out of state, uh, you know, uh, you know, I mentioned to him when I talked to him briefly on the phone, uh, I said, you know, if you happen to be, you know, looking at the mill one day, you know, you, and you wanted to meet, or if you wanted to come to a selectmen's meeting, if you're in town for a few days, um, you know, I'm sure we could arrange something. Uh, the board is eager to listen to any proposal, uh, that, you know, comes before, uh, for economic development in town.
Yeah.
Would be interesting, he's, he's purchasing the whole thing. Like, is he using it all, or like some building's gonna be vacant? Like, what's his, like his layout plan? It'd be nice to know, right?
He had mentioned that, that, you know, he would wanna house his workforce right there. So veterans there. He mentioned about, you know, potentially even having a, uh, you know, a grocery store or some type of.
Yeah, he said a hundred dorms.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that he would have, be all self-containing and self-sustaining right there on, on site. I'm not sure what his finances, uh, are secured at, but, um, you know, he, he has outlined, uh, some, some areas in which, you know, he could potentially get funds from. So, um, I think this is all very preliminary stuff, uh, very fluid. Um, but it's a potential that somebody had reached out.
Do you know if he has any asking, asking for anything from the board, or?
Not at this time. He, he, he wanted to kinda gauge the board's feedback. Um, you know, take this, uh, proposal, look at it for a week or so and let me know next week if, you know, what your thoughts are on it and I can relay it to him and see if he could come to me.
As, as a former architect, I see there's, it's a, it's, it's a good option. Buildings are in a shape where building furniture, uh, you know, they don't, he doesn't need to spend a lot of money on implementing the, the infrastructure for that. But there's a lot of buildings, too.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
You know, um.
Well, if he's making, if he wants to make a, say, um, grocery store out of one building, could see that. I could see where you could use the property and build things up, and then you're looking at a hundred dorms. That's a lot of dorms. And then classrooms.
Training.
Training area, you got the floor space for actually doing, and then you're gonna do storage of the product, too, warehousing. So I can see where they could use a lot of that space, but it is very big. And if this company is a very big company, I could see where they could use it, but if it's only a small company, that's a lot of space.
Yeah.
But if he's willing to do it, I think we should be willing to hear out what he says.
Yeah, absolutely.
And support him in his endeavors. Get business in here, get people working, get the mills working again.
Yeah, good, wow.
Um, bringing business back to America.
Also, in, 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 in my weekly report, I did get the monthly business report, uh, from Entree. Um, you know, going over, uh, fishing simulators, training awareness. Um, you know, we, we've done, you know, we've gotten a pretty decent high rating for, for participation. Not at a hundred percent, something that I'm striving to get to, uh, but, um, you know.
I still gotta do mine. I'll do mine tomorrow. You're welcome.
So, um, you know, for the most part, uh, a, a lot of people have participated. Um, and we wanna continue to strive to, to get it at, you know, ni- I wanna see it ninety to a hundred percent would be great.
You didn't ask them if they could just open the whole thing to, so we can do the past ones? Instead of making any west?
I hate the fact that they close them, cause it's like you gotta call them and put it.
Sure, I can, I can have them unlock all of them if you want.
Yeah, because there's no button or something that says request or anything. You just can't.
Yeah, that, that would be a good idea. You're locked out, but you can hit something and say, please unlock, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We can talk to them. Um, the new cherry sheet estimates came out. Um, I think Mr. Duff had, had mentioned, uh, to the board, uh, that they were the initial, uh, projections. Uh, we, we received cherry sheet for the town of Warren and obviously for our school district for the town. Uh, the governor's, uh, local aid proposal seems, uh, right in line with what we've received in the past. Um, no issues of any significant, um, cuts there as of this moment. Um, however, the cherry sheet for the Quabod Regional School District, um, it did see, uh, a significant reduction in transportation. Um, I, I did, uh, highlight that to Steve, um, and that's, that's a concern. Um, you know, we had a discussion about that. Um, he, he feels as though that there, there could be an error there. Um, so I'm hopeful that that can be corrected because if it is not, that, that's a significant, uh, budget deficit to start, you know, going into budget season with.
Yeah, that's.
With on, already an increase of eight percent that we, you know, just heard about tonight. So, um, Steve knows about it. Um, he's working with his finance people and team over there. Um, and, you know, I'll listen to any updates that he may have. I did, um, you know, have a conversation with Representative Small as well, uh, about it, um, and he's aware of it as well. Um, we are also going to be, uh, uh, talking about the pilot that, uh, was recently approved at town meeting in November, that was never approved. That is gonna be coming onto an agenda at some point. I, I, I'm having an initial conversation with, um, AES Solar, the company that's in charge of that pilot on Monday to kinda, you know, do some preliminary behind-the-scenes work to see if we can come up with some type of, um, an agreement. As you may remember, that, that pilot agreement was never approved at, at a town meeting. And then there was one with a signature and one without a signature. So we have to, you know, kinda reconcile those discrepancies. And so I will be having a conversation with AES Solar on Monday afternoon. That will be coming before the board at some point. Cherry sheets we just talked about. CDBG, um, uh, John, uh, O'Leary from CMRPC as well as CDAC is having a meeting at the senior center on, uh, February twelfth at six PM to talk about CDBG projects. There's a flyer that's in your packet that is, uh, on the website, on the Facebook, uh, is out there. Um, that, uh, is important. We're looking for participation, uh, from residents to participate in projects, uh, suggestions, concerns, constructive criticism, whatever the, the case may be, uh, please show up. Wrights Mills?
Jim?
Yes, sir.
We posted this on Facebook and, and I saw the insights and it had very, very low uh, reach. Is that the reason why Warren and Millbury are?
So there's, there's an opportunity here where Millbury is looking to do a small project for CDBG money. Warren could potentially be a lead on, on the CDBG project. Warren would be the lead. We would potentially have access to more funds of CDBG if we partnered with another community. So right now, we're entitled to, I think, eight hundred and fifty thousand. So if we partnered with another community, um, we're at, like, we, we could partner and get like one point two, one point one million, somewhere in that nucleus, and Millbury's project is only about a hundred grand. So it would be to Warren's benefit to partner with somebody. And we, if we partner, it's just partner for one time. It's just that one project. We don't, it's not a continuing partner. But there's some things that we have to work out in terms of the back of the house. Just like we were talking about with the water leans. Well, what type of extra work is it gonna cau- you know, cau- you know, take into effect on our finance team? That's something I wanna learn a little bit more about.
So we used to do, we haven't done them in a while, but we used to do these regional applications. We did, um, with Ware, we did them with Brookfield, with Hardwick, but we haven't done them in like five, six, seven years at least.
It's an opportunity. It's not a, you know, it's just, we were talking. I think John had mentioned it as an opportunity. It was a trial balloon and we're trying to get some information on it.
My, my feedback was just that the flyer didn't have very good success reaching people. It's not. It does, it doesn't transfer the message like he just told us right now.
Right, right. Yeah. Um, Wrights Mills, uh, that flyer's in there, too. We have a meeting at Wrights Mills, um, on the twenty-sixth of February with a snow date of March fifth. That is also posted around town. It's on the website, it's on Facebook, um, on, um, on, um, Town Alert. Both of them are on Town Alert. Um, so we're, we're hopeful that we can get some good participation at both of those, um, both of those public meetings. Um, the ZPT matter, um, in front of the ZBA, uh, the amended decision was signed, um, last week. Uh, it is now in the town clerk's office. It has a, a waiting period of, I believe, twenty days. Um, so, um, that has also been sent back to, uh, council, um, with a copy. So uh, we're waiting, you know, it's, it's a twenty-day period, uh, in the clerk's office.
So the last step is gonna be planning board?
Correct.
And we can't really do anything until the snow's gone and
Right.
we wanna do a sidewalk and and do our final sign-off, so.
So that, um, that, that's where we are with ZPT. Um, we are, uh, we have, uh, we're, uh, having budget meetings, starting with departments. Some, some departments have already submitted their budgets, and those meetings will be starting next week as well as the week after. Um, in light of, um, uh, another delay in the budget, uh, season process, we may extend that, you know, those meetings for, for, for an additional week as well. So, uh, we're moving full steam ahead. We've got a lot of moving parts. It's a, it's very much a busy time of the year uh, for a lot of departments right now, um, because of budgets. We have a lot of moving parts. We have teacher tr- contract negotiations. We've got, uh, patrolman association uh, contract negotiations. Um, we recently just, uh, finalized negotiations with the fire chief today. That contract's gonna be coming before you, uh, next week. So we're making progress, but there's a lot of moving parts and obviously the budget, um, and any potential increases in the wage scale as well.
Thank you for your weekly report.
What about this environmental solutions thing?
That is a, uh, that is correspondence that came in. That was about a, uh, oil spill on, on the Mass Pike.
Is, is, um, conservation being notified of these?
I'm, I'm not sure, um, uh.
Cause I think conservation should get a copy of these letters anytime we get them, just to make sure.
Yep.
We can certainly send it.
Yeah.
Can you, can you forward that to Joyce?
Okay.
New business?
I don't have any. I have a concern that I think something that's, we're gonna have to do something about it before we potentially lose federal funding. Um, the president has, um, done an executive order stopping federal funding to any sanctuary states. And Massachusetts was indicated on that that anybody having a sanctuary status, um, will, will not receive federal funding. Currently, Warren is not a sanctuary city, but we also have not declared that we are not a sanctuary city, separating ourselves from what the governor is proposing. I know some towns are getting ahead of that and declaring themselves not a sanctuary city. Um, but I don't know if that could stop and, and allow us to still receive federal funding. But currently, Massachusetts will most likely not receive any federal funding in the future unless they get rid of that status. So I think that could hurt us in the long run. If, if we can't do something about it. Um, but I think it's one of those things we're gonna have to address eventually, where towns are gonna start addressing it.
Joe already reported that the governor said we weren't a sanctuary state.
We're not, but they're declaring Massachusetts and saying Massachusetts will not receive federal funding. So it's not individual by towns cause they kinda lump us all in the sun. So.
Right, but if the governor already declared it, then isn't it done?
She can't declare it. Nobody voted on it. Towns and residents never had a vote on it.
Well, for now, can we search a little bit more and find out about it?
Yeah.
See if that can affect us. See if it's gonna hurt us.
I don't know that would have flowed. I don't know that.
Cause it flows down to the state and then flows down to the municipalities, but.
If it's a s- if, if he cuts off the state, then it doesn't matter. It's not like, you know, Warren's gonna get federal funds directly, but.
No, but some grants, EDA.
CDBG.
CDBG.
Well, I know, but I'm saying it come, all that money comes to the state and then goes to us. So, I, you know.
It's all federal funds, all federal funds. So CDBG, uh, that firefighter, uh, grant that we just got, the EDA, um, those are all federal funds.
Unfortunately, we are.
We're monitoring to see if there's any, um, you know, change in course in terms of, you know, reimbursements or anything like that. Um, you know, especially with EDA, that we have only a few months left on that grant. Um, you know, the firefighter grant that we got, it's a federal grant. Um, the CDBGs are federal grants. Um, so w- w- we're keeping an eye on, on if there's a change.
Just keep an eye because unfortunately, we, we are tied. We can't do it. That's, that's the beauty to live in such a beautiful place. Yes, chief?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, I just spoke with Jim about that. So, um, before the executive order came through, two days before that, I had requested federal funds for that grant in the amount of nine, about approximately ninety-eight thousand dollars for the hose and appliance grant that we got. Uh, we initially did fear that that was going to be held up and, and it was the opinion of the fire district that we're in, that it very well could be. However, once that was rescinded, um, initially, we did receive the money. So I have been in contact with Dawn and she confirmed that we did indeed, uh, receive that ninety-eight thousand out of the hundred and two thousand that the federal, uh, government is supposed to give us. We still have a couple additional, uh, pieces of equipment to purchase. However, we have received the bulk of the chunk of that grant at this time.
That was for when they froze the, the federal funding?
The initial freezing. Of the federal funds, ironically, I had submitted for that payment two days before that. So it was kind of up in the air as to whether or not that was gonna be affected and there was quite a bit of scrambling across the state for anyone that had grants out there and the, uh, district was collecting.
What just happened is he just signed an executive order to funding sanctuary states.
Yes, and I, and I saw that today. I, I just wanted the board to be aware that we did already receive the majority of those funds, just so that you guys would know that, so.
But we are monitoring. So we are, we are monitoring all of the federal funds that, you know, that, making sure that we get all of our reimbursements back.
Yeah. It's hard to believe. I have two kids. I treat them the same way. It doesn't matter. Okay, any other new business? Old business?
Oldest living resident, it said.
And it's not Joe.
But Joe's responsible for the oldest.
But Joe is responsible for them.
Check that out.
This is what it would look like in a wood frame. And I've been told that Mrs. R- And I've been told that Mrs. Reed is now living in Westbrook Field, which takes her out of the equation.
Oh, so sorry. Moving on, who's next? Is it your, it's your neighbor, right? It is.
Surprise, David! This is, in white, this is the.
I like the tinted.
Oh, hold them both up, let me see.
But you're giving away who is, who it is.
Well, I mean, you know. Yeah, I would go with tinted.
I like the tinted.
It, it looks aged.
Question number one.
The seal, as you can see, is, that's a printed seal. Okay, this is the embossed.
Yeah, I like that.
This is the basic printed seal.
No, the embossed.
Yeah, that's okay.
It's gold.
Can you pass that around, Joe? Yeah, it doesn't matter if you can read it, it's compacted. Let me see.
And yes, it's crooked.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
No, Lori and I were working on it. And it's gonna take a little bit of finesse to get it straight. But I have a hope into the seal, so we're good.
It looks like you have to push a little harder.
It's an automatic button thing.
Oh, really? Okay. Yeah, I would do the embossed.
Yeah.
Right?
It looks nicer.
It does, here.
That's what you wanted, David.
Yeah, you might wanna go there with a police detail if you're gonna deliver that one.
We're gonna invite her here.
I wanna police detail in.
You're gonna pick her up for the meeting?
Yeah, we'd give her a ride.
No, she would not take that.
You live three hundred.
I, I love her, she's a woman, but she's an independent woman that.
You live three hundred feet from her.
Ask her, maybe she'll give you a ride.
A little longer, yeah, she probably wanted me to drive with her.
Yeah.
I don't need you.
I have a suggestion. Can we have, can we push? It takes a little bit higher, have the seal in the middle, and have three of us equally down at the bottom?
Oh, you're a pain in the butt, yes.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Is that how you want it?
I mean, the other thing is, why not just emboss the certificate?
You can't.
What, it doesn't fit or something?
It does not fit. I've tried everything.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it looks better with the gold, too, it stands out.
Yeah, no, it's just, you know, might look kinda cool, though.
It more on Joe's budget, so.
Yeah. Yeah, what kind of budget do you have for this?
I don't know.
The count is.
Yeah, I like, I like the, the embossed, yeah, looks good.
Embossed on the cream.
Yeah, and if you can put it in the middle, that's fine.
You want it in the middle with the names below.
Yeah, that would look better.
So, we have more space for the signature.
Yeah, and all those dots.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe our pictures.
You're going too far.
However it ends up, I think it's beautiful the way it is.
No, I can do that, that's fine, that's not a problem.
And just like gentlemen, if you could have her here, you can get the.
Yeah, it'd be great to get her here.
Maybe get the news reporter from the wherever you're listening to take her picture.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll bring my camera, we'll take the picture, we'll send it to them.
How are you gonna take the picture? You're gonna be in it.
I can put a tripod, and control it with my phone.
Okay.
Or run for ten seconds.
I can't control it with my watch.
All right. So, that was for new business, old business, we have this. Any more old business?
Nope. And we did the correspondence.
Did you get more information about the, oh, sorry?
Under correspondence, I did receive an email from Maureen Fortin. She is in charge of Earth Day, as well as she's coordinating with parks. They're gonna have another Earth Day cleanup. They've asked myself and the board members if they would like to participate. They've extended the hours of Earth Day cleanup.
What day is it?
It's going to be April twelfth, and it's gonna be from eight forty-five until one thirty in the afternoon, with a rain date on April thirteenth. And I believe it's gonna be the same procedure as we did last, last time meet at the, at the school.
Eight thirty to one o'clock.
Wait, no, eight forty-five to one thirty.
What day is that?
April twelfth.
And when's the rain date?
The thirteenth, the next day.
Oh.
So, on April nineteenth, Lucy Stone is doing the bunny thing.
Okay. So, the parks and stuff will be cleaned up for the bunny thing, then?
The egg hunt at Lucy Stone.
Okay. So, I just wanted to let the board know that I did get an email from Maureen Fortin.
Well, good. Try to, if you, if you, if they send us information, we can put it on the website and
Yeah.
and, and every, everywhere else, yeah, so we can promote it. David, did you get more information about the dumpster for the George's Pizza?
Uh, no, I haven't been able to meet with George yet. Okay. Cause he's in on Mondays, and I haven't seen him yet, but I'm gonna get with him about that. And I'll follow up with the board next week.
Okay.
Rich wasn't here for that. George from George's Pizza is asking if we can have, if he can be allowed to place a dumpster in the municipal parking lot.
Okay.
The reason why is currently he has two of them along the riverside, and the trash gets big, cause they're small. And running the business, they can overflow, and they're getting in the way of everything there. And he just doesn't want people walking by the dumpster right there and the stuff going down the riverbank, you know, from just storms and stuff, you know, whatever. So, he's just asking to place a larger dumpster in the municipal parking lot, or in the back, so it's out of the way, just so he can use that.
Okay.
So, I, we asked for more information of the dumpster, because there's this spot over there at the far-left corner. But then, we found out that Water Department
Yeah.
goes out that way.
Yeah, that's true.
So, they're coming anyway, right? We can talk about it, cause I have a few ideas about it.
And I could ask George to come to the meeting, too.
Yeah, that'll be great.
If you could just put that on the agenda, unless you're about to throw a wrench in this.
Well, I, I, I would just say, I would just caution the board, when using a municipal parking lot for private use, you know, i- i- is, 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 is a potential conflict of interest there. So, we, we can't, we can't, you know, really be doing that. And then, there's also some liability issues as well.
Also, he had dumpsters there before and didn't take care of them. He had to grease during the bridge construction, and we had a heck of a time trying to work with that. And it took forever to get rid of them, so, I don't know.
I mean, there, there, there could be a solution, you know, you know, not at the municipal parking lot, that maybe we could all work on together to, to address this concern, I, you know.
What about it, the, um, Old Cornerstone Bank? It's about the same distance.
That's not a property.
If he wanted to rent from.
Yeah, that's what I mean, he could rent a little spot from Jim Fountain. I mean, what does he need, like ten by ten, maybe?
A parking spot.
Yeah, just rent a little spot from Jim.
If I was owning that property, I'll get a pizza every week.
In exchange for a dumpster? That's not a bad deal.
He does have good pizza.
I go there every week, anyway.
I'm there often.
Little bartering, yeah.
Well, let's, let's, I know there's a lot of things we can't do. It's a business in town with.
But we wanna, we wanna work with our businesses.
And wanna, wanna try to, try to make it work.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we could have a discussion, and, you know, but.
It is good to know the regulations and what we are not supposed to do. But, you know, it, it, I think the, the mean to help a business, it's something that we like to do.
So, do you think we should have him in here to propose it? What do you like to do, where?
Say that again?
Have him come in here for a meeting to propose it, so we can hear from him directly?
Yeah, I think it's, it's better if, if he comes and says what he wants, you can tell him, look, we really can't do that, and then have an idea of renting that space. I don't know, just bring, we don't have to, we don't have to solve it.
And, and I, and I'm not sure if the Board of Health has regulations as to, you know, you know, boxing in the dumpster, you know, they, they may require like a fence around it or to be secured. I don't know, you know, in, in, in terms of the, the use of a municipal parking lot for a private entity, that's a no-no.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that will fall the same with the water, why they have to use our parking lot to get out?
I'm sorry?
Water Department uses the parking lot, they drive through.
They, they somehow.
There's no easement on the water.
They designed that parking spaces so they could come in and out from that garage. And even the parking itself, it's out of code.
There's no curb there?
Nope.
Nope. They drive right through the parking lot, through the back there.
So, it'll be the same thing. So, but, you know, but even the parking itself is not up to code. All the measurements are way off, and it looks like it, it changed the design to make that happen.
Yeah, well, I mean, the Water Department, I know it's not a town entity, but it's really a quasi municipal organization.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know.
I love pizza.
Me, too. I gotta cut back on it.
We all treat everybody the same.
But we gotta understand, the Water Department is private. The town is not funding it, they're not supporting it in any way. They have no say in their meetings, they have their own elections, they have their own board members, they have their own budget.
And, 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 you know, if, 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 if they're traveling on town property and the board doesn't want to see that happen, then we could send them a letter.
Well, that would shut them down, that garage.
Yeah.
Well, they can still go on the, in the front of the, no?
Just the front, they got a garage that's in the back that they access, they drive into.
Okay, but the idea is to be partial and try to help and find a solution. We don't have to resolve the whole thing about the dumpster, but at least we can look for solutions.
I guess we could use that, too, because we're going after their tax bills, their liens. We're collecting those for them, and they're also using town property to access their building. And yet, they raise our water bills in return.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot to talk. And if we can be helpful, mine as well.
Mm-hmm.
All right? And any other old business? We went through correspondence. We have the committee forum, the Wright Mills, Lasting Environmental Solutions. We're gonna move into comments and concerns. I have a concern la- next week, I won't be here on Thursday.
Okay.
So, you're gonna, guys, I'm gonna have to drive the meeting, is that okay?
I think we got it.
Okay, I was counting on you. I know I can count on you. My kid has a, he has a concert far, far away, and we have to travel. I don't think we'll be back in time, that's my only concern. Any concerns?
No, I don't think so.
No, we're good?
Good.
Jim?
No.
Mrs. Dusty?
No, thank you.
Open to the public? Yes, Joe?
Joe has a comment?
Wow.
Wow.
Well, I was thinking, you know, when you talked about maybe getting a Minute Clinic in town? At one time, this town had three doctors, and their offices were in town. Dr. Hyde, Dr. Rerrick, Dr. Snowden.
I was waiting for you to do a Three Stooges thing.
Yeah. I love you, too.
So, what happened with the doctors?
Dr. Snowden moved to Maine, and the other two died. They were never replaced. But then again, at one time, we also had two dentist's offices. And in the eighteen hundreds, we had an eye doctor. These people had their offices in town. And as I recall with Dr. Snowden, he was a heart specialist. And I don't ever recall an ambulance going to his office. It may have happened, but, you know, let's see, like with Dr. Rerrick, Dr. Hyde, they delivered babies.
How long ago was this?
Uh, nineteen seventy-three, seventy-four.
I was just born.
Wow, I wasn't born.
Oh, my gosh.
I was graduating from high school.
Bunch of children, I'm dealing with children.
Hey, I was alive then, so. Not as, not as long as some others, but I was alive.
Well, I, I graduated from Warren High here in nineteen sixty-eight. You know, it's possible to have a doctor's office and.
It is. Be nice to see one come back again, or at least a little clinic or something where, you know.
I mean, you, you might have to get in touch with one of those universities out by Boston that teaches people to become doctors.
Yeah, just nobody wants their own practice, they wanna work for a big business now.
Well, I was gonna say.
They rather work for a hospital.
PCPs don't make any money. If you're a heart specialist, you make a boatload of money. But if you're just a general physician, you don't make any money.
Well, isn't, isn't the doctor office in Westbrook Field having that issue right now? Some of their doctors are going to the hospital and not taking any new patients, and they're just kinda phasing them out now?
A lot of doctors are not making new patients.
Yeah, cause they're going to the hospital.
If you could get in touch with UMass and maybe, cause we, we, I go to the Barry Family Clinic, which is just a clinic, you know, it's not a minute clinic, but it's just a clinic. And UMass might consider putting one here.
Well, you know what, if, if this guy, I mean, I can't imagine he's gonna fill that entire mill, but maybe he can carve out a little spot?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
I mean, that's a question we should ask him. Do you anticipate filling this thing? And if not, what could, what would you wanna do with the extra space?
That would actually probably help him on his, um, his insurance.
Sure.
Because if you have a clinic right there on site for employee safety, too, and employee physi- physicals
Yeah.
for your, your workers, that would be beneficial. And if you open it up to the public, the town, and you could say, well, to warn residents, where they can get stuff there.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna have to be a, a study and a master plan of what is gonna be there, cause depends on that, Warren, I don't think it's ready to support a lot of stuff, so it's gonna be a lot of work, you know, drainage, water, power.
Well, that's him doing it all, he'd have to do it all.
Yeah, yeah, but from outside his property.
Yeah, the infrastructure.
The infrastructure.
Right, I know, but that's what the EDA.
That's what they're doing.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Good thought, thank you, Joe. Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna propose you to find a doctor or anything this time.
Well, once he takes care of the oldest resident, he could go out and find some doctors.
He did come to us with a problem, so.
Yeah.
Isn't the policy, you gotta come with a solution, too?
Yeah, if you don't have a solution, then you need to find one.
We appreciate you, John. Any other concerns?
Maybe Joe could be our doctor.
Oh.
The town doctor. Can you make it to medical school?
My father was a combat medic.
There you go, that qualifies you.
Yeah, Dawn, when are you gonna open your office?
Anybody on Zoom?
Nope, no one's on Zoom.
Next meeting will be February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six P.M. I won't be here, but these guys will take care of the meeting.
Will probably show up.
No, think about it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richard Hucker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, we are adjourned.